I am going to gavel us in and ask the clerk to note, let's see, our time is 1:34 PM. For in just a moment when I do get to item number C. At this time, I'm going to just give notice that we have an unusual set of circumstances here in Nuones County today with Tropical Storm Nicholas approaching the Texas Gulf Coast and having Nuones County be inside the Tropical Storm Watch area as well as the Tropical Storm Storm Surge area, warning area. It is my intention to go through items 1A, B, C, and D, and then I will be announcing a recess and we will come back at 2:00 PM tomorrow. Having said that, it's not lost on me that our courtroom hallway was full and I do believe it's important to honor the fact that so many came for public comment as this meeting was posted per the Open Meetings Act. So at this time, I'd ask for invocation and I'm going to turn to, I have to say, my favorite person who does invocation, Commissioner Modis. Would you say prayer for us? And I would ask those to remain standing, remove your hats as we pray for those in harms way especially, and we will continue with the Pledge of Allegiance to United States of America and to our Texas flag. Commissioner?
Thank you Judge. Dear God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the rain. We pray that it's not too intense, neither is the storm surge or the winds. We pray for those in the path of the storm and pray for those who protect us. We pray for our first responders, for our public works, and for all those who respond in times of severe weather and flooding. And we just pray for your grace, your mercy, and your protection over them. Dear God, we also ask for blessings as we continue to deal with COVID. We pray for healing for those who are sick. We pray for those who are grieving and suffering loss. Dear God, we pray for this court, that we do your will, that we follow your grace, and that we do all we can for the people of Nuones County. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands hand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
It is September 13th, 2021. We are at the Nuones County Courthouse on the third floor, Commissioner's courtroom. I do certify that all commissioners are present and therefore a quorum is established at this time. I'll move to public comment and recognize Joe A. Gonzalez.
Thank you Judge, Commissioners. On behalf of the Nuones County Sheriff Officers Association, as you guys know, I'm the Union President, and I'm here to speak about our hazard pay or our lack thereof, right? And so last year in March, you know, our COVID numbers started exploding here. Our agency has taken a big hit over that time. You know, we hover about 60 vacancies altogether, including field operations, the guys out in the field plus the constables, right? And so we definitely are here to advocate as a group, as one united front, that we are in favor of hazard pay for all county employees and including ourselves. However, we do believe Judge and Commissioners that our exposure to COVID is a lot greater than most county employees, and so we would like for you guys to also keep that in mind. We're a different group. I understand we're all Nuones County employees and we agree with that, but you know, also we want to plant that seed in your head that our exposure is a lot, a lot greater. For example, we have guys right now working in our jail that are working with COVID positive inmates, and they have to interact with them. They have to put their hands on those guys. And so their exposure is a lot higher than a regular county employee. So I just want to plant that in your head. And you know, when the time comes, I know you guys are going to reset for tomorrow. Take that into consideration with our collective bargaining group versus a regular county employee. But like, like I said, we all stand united. And there's other people, like the guys in public works, I know like Rocky, for example, who works out at the annex. He asked that him and his guys also have to deal with those people. So there is some people that, you know, that do have that close contact with COVID. And then our guys, you know, that sort of warrants, our patrol guys, they come in close contact with people that have COVID. And I just want to bring that awareness to this court. And you know, we've been patient. We've waited over a year and a half or whatever to wait for that hazard pay. And so we've been, you know, we've been kind of sitting quietly on the sideline. But Judge, as you know, we are hurting and we need this pay. And then going forward, you know, we continue to fall behind. We appreciate all of the, all of the money that the court has allocated towards our collective bargaining agreement, but we continue to fall behind, you know, and there's other agencies that are just paying so much more. I just came back from Dallas. We're at a convention and it just almost heartbreaking to hear how much everybody else makes, and we're just the training grounds for everybody else. And that needs to stop, okay? So, and that's really all I got to say. We will be back tomorrow as a group and I hope that we made a, you know, an impact on you guys. Tonight, when you, when you go to bed, I want you to think about the difference between a regular county employee and somebody who has to put their hands and go hands-on with somebody who was COVID positive. And that's really all I got to say, Commissioners, and we, we thank you for taking us into consideration, okay?
Thank you, sir. And thanks to all of you that, that came here into Commissioner's courtroom today. This is your house and this is your forum. So we thank you for that. I did sign myself up for public comment only to let you again know and the audience know, because this was a posted meeting, that I do intend to recess shortly, but we will be back. My recess will be till tomorrow. We'll come back on the record at, you know, Jenny, I was going to ask if we could do it at 2:00 PM due to the fact that the generators will be testing tomorrow at 9:00 AM. I know that's a, it's a little more than the 24 hours. Is that all right? I could do 1:30 and then take a really, really long bathroom break.
I believe you are, you are fine. You've got two parts of the code and you could fall under either one.
Thank you. Okay, and just a quick update. We are, you can find myself and the rest of the emergency management team on the fifth floor along with your folks representing the sheriff's office in our Emergency Operations Command Center. Tropical Storm Nicholas does look like it is going to make landfall maybe this evening. Looks like Mata Gorda Bay, Calhoun County to be in the bull's eye. Having said that, we're still experiencing very strong winds and particularly surge in Port Aransas, our Precinct 4 area. And this is why I am recessing. It is not because I do not want to have this conversation and I'm looking forward to it. It is simply that we need to keep our thoughts on public safety. And if I can be on the fifth floor and here, I would do it, but I haven't figured that one out yet. So we ask that you have patience with us, come back tomorrow. And also please know for all those online and commissioners, our hotlines are open at 888-0111 for emergency management. If you are listening and you need to report a situation that involves, of course, safety, you'll want to dial 911, but if it's a situation regarding a road that you think needs closing or anything that, that just might be a result of Tropical Storm Nicholas, that is our number to call. Also, you can always reach the county judge's office at 888-0444. And again, my thanks to all who came here today expecting a full meeting. We will recess at now and the time is 1:43 PM. We're recessed until tomorrow at 2:00. Thank you. Well, glad we are here gathered. This is truly the we're in it together philosophy. And I'd like to welcome everybody to Commissioner's Court, and particularly I do that by gaveling us in and noting the time is 2:06 PM. And I'd like for everyone to, if you would so kindly, gentlemen, remove your hats as we stand for prayer and remain standing as we give.
We're in recess.
Oh, recess.
We're coming back from recess.
Oh, that is right. You know what? We actually recessed, but look at them. I don't think there's anything wrong with me coming back in from, I'll gavel us out of the recess that we are in, and I would still like to start with a prayer. And that will set the tone for a good afternoon. I'll go ahead and leave. Dear Heavenly Father, we gather here before you as policymakers and men and women who serve. So many that have gathered here ask for nothing more but your loving arms around them to protect them and their families as they protect others. We ask for your discernment and for the ability to understand the difference of the things that we can change and the things that are not in our power to change. And of course, we ask for that wisdom to understand the difference between the two. We ask that you provide your loving comfort to those who are sick and those who are healing from sickness. We ask you to protect our men and women in uniform throughout the world, wherever they may be, who are dedicated to uplifting others in our country's name. We ask all these things so that we may live up to your promise of loving one another in our community. Grant us the ability to have a good court today, to continue the work that we have pledged to do. We ask this in your name. Amen. So because we already have done the pledge from the previous court, I'll move right into our regular agenda items. And so I'm going to get a little bit of help. So because I recessed, Jenny, I don't have a public comment from the original, but I have the right to open up public comment again. And so I'll choose to do so at this time and recognize that I have at least 12 here and maybe a few online. We'll, we'll see. And I'll put the glasses on and I've got Bill Durrell is first. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And also, as I say on deck, will be District Attorney Angelique Hernandez.
I don't really have much more to say than I did last week. I just wanted to make sure that y'all knew I was here in case y'all had any more questions about the amphitheater in Robstown.
Thank you so much. Angelique Hernandez, First Assistant District Attorney.
Good afternoon, Judge, Commissioners. First, I just wanted to come to say thank you on behalf of the District Attorney's Office for all of your hard work and dedication, for quite honestly, the blessing that you gave to our office and for, you know, passing the proposed budget the way you did. We were able to begin sharing the news with the attorneys and staff today and to tell you there was a lot of tears would be an understatement. Y'all changed lives doing what you did, and I just want to say thank you. I also came in support of the law enforcement officers that you see in this room. When we first started our issues with the budget, we, we told you back then, we stand in solidarity with the other departments and offices. And the men and women in this room and those that choose to serve, theirs is the most dangerous of jobs. And I speak both as a First Assistant and as the wife of a state trooper who did time at the NCSO in patrol. He served as a K-9 officer in DPS, and now he's a sergeant, but a lot of that time was on the roadway. The hardest of which he tells me was as an NCSO patrol officer. They're out in the county, they're in the rural area. It's not like their backup is two or three minutes away and all of a sudden they're going to have all these other officers on scene with them. They're by themselves and they rely and with COVID and everything that happened with COVID, they were having to continue to go into homes and face those risks. They continue to have to face them with every stop that they make and every encounter that they make. And so today, as you consider hazard pay, I, I urge you to please think about them and think about their families and the danger that they put themselves in by a choice to serve. Their badge means something not just to our office, but I think to the entire community. And so I would respectfully and humbly ask on behalf of myself, our office, and District Attorney Mark Gonzalez, that you grant them the relief that they're requesting and that you grant them their hazard pay because it is very deserved.
Thank you. I'll call Michelle Putman.
Judge, are we on public comment or agenda?
Yes, we are. Public comment.
Okay.
That's what I asked, I told Jenny that I, even though I recessed, I'm reopening public comment.
Okay, because these are, okay, these are all agenda items that they, that we could have debate with them, but you don't.
I know.
Okay, that's fine.
If you'd like to make comment, I'm happy to, but I figured in the interest of time, let's, let's hear from them and then we can also.
I just didn't want to think we weren't responding, so.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Michelle.
Thank you, Commissioner Chazie. Thank you, Judge Gonzalez. Michelle Putman, Second Assistant District Attorney, and I'm also here twofold. First and foremost, such sincere gratitude to all of you for what you've done for our office. I cannot even begin to express how immense of an impact this will have, not just today, not just next month or next year, but for years to come. Because what this means is we are now competitive. We can compete with other counties and hire and retain extremely qualified individuals to help prosecute the most serious of crimes that happen in this county. And that's the first that anything of this significance has happened in this office in the decade that I've worked here. And I, from what I've heard, all the years before that too. So I know it was a lot of work, a lot of heartache. I know it wasn't easy. And on behalf of myself and all of our attorneys and all of the attorneys to come in the future, we sincerely, we thank you and know that we genuinely appreciate it. And then secondly, I have the pleasure of overseeing and taking our office means I get to work one-on-one with most of these officers here, lots of them and more who aren't here. And we see firsthand, well, I guess secondhand because we're watching videos, but what they go through day in and day out. And I hope that the recent 20-year anniversary of September 11th reminds us that they are the first ones to run in when the rest of us are running away. COVID has made their job even more complicated and even more dangerous than it already was. And so I, I would, even as just a citizen, I fully support their hazard pay requests. Thank you.
Thank you. I think my eyes are getting worse the longer I sit in this chair, but is it, is it Arnold?
Yes.
Oh, it's Arnold, yes.
Yes, ma'am. How you doing?
Good.
And it's Carpenter with the.
Yeah, I just couldn't quite read it. I apologize.
That's okay. Good afternoon, Judge, Commissioners. Arnold Carpenter, Sergeant, Vice President with the Union. Joe's the right-hand man. You don't see much of me, you see all of Joe. I'm just here firsthand to say thank you for, for the even, the opportunity to even talk about the subject. I know it's something we've, we've discussed for the last year and a half. Firsthand in the jail, there's no such thing as social distancing in there. You can't even enforce it. You can highly recommend it, but it's not going to happen. It's not, it's an enclosed area. We've been battling COVID for a year and a half, a little more than a year and a half now. Not once have I heard my staff complain about having to go work with COVID unit. Day in and day out, these, these officers continue to don their uniform, coming to work each and every day and do the job that they're asked a task to do. When we got hit really, really hard, we had the reassignment of patrol officers. Those patrol officers came into the jail and not once did I hear those patrol officers complain about the situations that we had, we had to deal with. So if and when this gets approved, this is, this is going to be a great step in the right direction, not just for the county employees, but especially for the law enforcement officers of this county. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Scott Leighton.
Thank you, Judge, and thank you to the Commissioner's Court for allowing us to be here to speak today. My name is Scott Leighton. I am the current president of the Police Officers Association. I'm also a vice president with the Combined Law Enforcement Associations of Texas, and I'm here today to speak in, on behalf and in favor of the hazardous pay. Sergeant Carpenter stole some of my thunder, but the biggest emphasis, based on what I heard from the first and second assistants to the DA's offices, it sounds like there were pay raises or something that made them competitive. And I think this is the opportunity to start taking the ball, moving the ship forward, moving the ball downfield. And even earlier, when I was speaking with Bill Durrell, our conversation came up about the sins of our fathers. And everybody knows that the county is, is one of the most underpaid in the state. There are other counties that, that have these issues, but I would challenge y'all to grab the bull by the horns and be the first, be the leader to make this change. As Sergeant Carpenter said during COVID, these folks came to work. They're short-staffed, there's about 50 vacancies right now, but they continue to come to work. They know they're short-staffed, they still get up and repeat the process. It may be a revolving door to them. It's, it's, it may be in monotone, but they can, they continue to come to work knowing that there are people there that are working in the jail. While they're working in the jail, the people they're working with are the ones that want to spit on them, throw urine on them, throw feces on them, but guess what? They get up the next morning and they come back to work. Or if they work the night shift, they get up that afternoon and they come to work. And as was mentioned about COVID, you're working in an environment that is enclosed. There is no room to social distance. They didn't have the equipment that was needed. As a matter of fact, it was Cleet that first came in and brought some of the initial equipment in gloves, PPEs, and hand sanitizer that started to give them some of the equipment that they needed. But they still came to work. They continued knowing that even as there was a majority of the inmates that were infected by COVID, they still came to work and didn't do their job. And then their coworkers started getting infected with COVID. And they still came to work and did their job. And then the worst thing happened. August of 2020, Raul Salazar passed away from COVID. But what did they do? They kept coming to work. This is your opportunity to, to reward them for their dedication and their loyal to the, their loyalty to the community of Nuones County, the citizens of Nuones County, and the leadership of Nuones County. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Roland Martinez, Lieutenant, welcome.
Thanks Judge. Let me set this thing up real quick. I'm really not that cool, but I'm going to try to be.
Take your time. For the clerk, I do have all their addresses if you did want to add them.
I'm going to make this public.
Okay. Your what now?
Not law enforcement.
Okay.
But I'll get their names from you, but I won't. Judge, there's also one person online that wants to.
Yes, yes, I see them. I'm just going to go through my roster here.
How you doing Judge? Commissioners? Are you doing okay? I just wanted to take the time to, to make a public comment and really show my gratitude and my appreciation for the men and women standing along these, these walls. And some of the things have already been covered, but I'm going to go through it again. I'm Lieutenant Roland Martinez Jr. As I've known some of you guys, I serve as Sheriff Hooper's Patrol Lieutenant. I work under his direction and the direction of his administration and Captain Lowborough, who's here also. Like I said, I want to use this opportunity to thank the men and women of the sheriff's office and the constable's office and the local law enforcement publicly. I've done it time and time again in private in my office and anytime I get a chance to. I think my guys will vouch for that. I wanted to thank them for their, for their continued commitment and their service to the office and to the community for the last year and a half. These men and women throughout their careers have answered many calls for service, but there was a lot of unfamiliar calls for service that we had to answer for the past year and a half, one of which included going into the jail. In April 2020, we actually changed shifts and we went to 12-hour shifts so that way we can maximize the manpower that we had and put as many resources on the road as we could. Come July of 2020, we ended up sending most of, most of those resources into the jail to help our brothers and sisters that were already going through the, going into the fight. The worst came in August of 2020, like Mr. Scott Leighton said, when, with the passing of Sergeant Salazar, and without hesitation through that emotional roller coaster, our guys saddled up and they went back into work, as you should all expect, and we all continued to answer the call. Currently, our deputies in field operations continue to cycle in and out of the jail to continue to help our brothers and sisters because again, I think the worst has come back. Many of whom were there for the first time. A lot of our patrolmen now and jail staff have contracted the COVID virus and some of them for the second time, with the second time being a little bit worse. There's been guys in my division and also in the jail that's seen their families also contract the disease the second time around. I won't sit in front of you and say that some of these, that these men and women, that some of these frustrations didn't come out at times because they did. But they did so professionally, they did so privately. They didn't go to social media, they didn't go into the public and nay-say the agency or they didn't nay-say the county or the county leaders. They continue to saddle up. They continue to go to work and held their frustrations mostly directed to their supervisors, myself included. There's a quote that's proudly displayed in our office and it says, "Commitment is doing something that you said you were going to do long after the mood you said it in has passed." I can tell you that that mood that they said that they were going to be there and sharp and bright-eyed Bushy Tell may not be the same as when we interviewed them that first time, but I can tell you that the commitment is strong. And everybody can sleep well tonight, today and the next day, next year, tomorrow, knowing that these guys will continue to stand watch whether you decide to do what y'all plan to do or not. I offer these words today in hopes that, that you all see how truly valuable these men and women are to the community. I hope you are as proud of them as I am. I'm extremely proud of every single one of these men and women. I've worked alongside with them a lot and hopefully you guys can show that, how proud you are of them, what the decision y'all make today. That's all I had today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Nathaniel Pettis. Welcome.
Hello, I'm Nathaniel Pettis. I've been with Nuones County for 16 years. I've served with the sheriff's office, I've served with the constable's office, I've served as the vice president for the Sheriff's Association. And it may sound kind of strange that a constable was the Sheriff's Association Vice President, but we are combined association, so we stand here together. We thank the court for being supportive of law enforcement. Y'all have supported us with vests, radios, tasers. I have a shiny, brand-new car. You'll appreciate that. But we need financial help as well. When COVID hits us, it takes a financial toll on our families and the deputies. Many of them have to work 50-plus hours to supplement their income, which allows them to stay working for Nuones County because it is no secret that Nuones County is a lower-paying agency. I support everything that these men and women here have said. We ask the court to continue to support law enforcement, but this time we need financial help. Thank you.
Thank you. The next up is Danny LaBra, captain.
Good evening, Judge, Commissioners. Thank you for having us here and listening to us today. I'm here in support of the hazardous pay and I hope y'all will consider it, seriously consider it. I understand there might be a consideration 10% across the board. I'm asking, consider maybe 20% for essential personnel. You look around this room, these are the men and women that are out there working every day. Holidays, they don't get to go home early. When others get to, they're out there. They're in the jail, they're on the road, they're, they're the ones that take care of the citizens in our county. You know, whenever there's a disaster, everybody's home with their families, they're not. They're, they're, there's one team out here taking care of everybody. So I just consider that, consider them working in the jail with COVID and the conditions that, short-staffed as we are. I know we talked a little bit about it, but if you combine corrections and field operations, we're probably over 65 people short. That's a, that's a big number. And that's not even including FM LA or, or those on light duty. The pay for constables and the sheriff's office deputies is, it's really low. And I know we've come a ways, but we have a ways to go. And when the pay's that low, there's, it affects everything. It affects morale, you can't keep people. We are like a training ground with the sheriff's office, and I'm sure the constables the same way. People come, we train them and get them ready to work and then they move on to bigger and better things, and you can't blame them for that. But we need to keep our people. We train them, we need to keep them so our county police gets better and better. If you compare constables and NCSO to other agencies in the county or even outside the county, our size, there's, there's no comparison. You can't compare us to CCPD or the port or DPS or CCSD Airport. There's just no comparison that you got their pay here, ours way down here. So it makes it really hard to keep people. So it makes it really hard to keep people, and retention is the key. If, if we can pay more and we can retain some people, and I'm talking about in the jail and in patrol, that's less overtime, that's less we have to pay in overtime, if we can keep people, that's the key, to get filled up and keep people. I have some other things, but that's basically what I wanted to say, I just want to thank y'all very much for listening to me and supporting us.
Thank you. Thank you. Joey Gonzalez.
Commissioners, once again, I'm up here again, you guys heard what I told you yesterday, so I'm not gonna give you the whole spiel like I did yesterday, but as you can see, we're here as the Nuasis County Sheriff Officers Association, we stand united. I'm not gonna go over what every, what everybody else said, but you know, one thing that, that I didn't mention yesterday, which was brought earlier, is that, you know, we get exposed on a daily basis, and the hardest part is going home to your family, and if you have a special-needs kid, or just little, little kids at home, and you're bringing that to your kids, and it's very hard, you know, a lot of us have gotten a routine where we have to go and change out before you can even enter into your house, and so, like everybody said here, we're all in support of hazard pay, we haven't given up, we continue to come to work day in, day out, knowing the, the bad conditions that, that we face with COVID, and I'm not gonna beat a dead horse, I just want you guys to, to support the hazard pay, and thank you for, for allowing us to speak.
Thank you, Tim Rusk.
Judge and Commissioners, I'm, Tim Rusk, I'm an Assistant District Attorney, and I'm just one of many, many, many who just wanna simply say thank you for passing the budget.
Thank you.
Just emphasizing everything that Angelica and Michelle said, and just to let you know, I'm another person, one of, one of everybody who just wants to say thank you.
Simon? Is it Rawls?
Good afternoon, I'm Simon Rawls, I'm also an Assistant DA, and I just, like Mr. Rusk, wanted to thank you for passing the budget and giving us that increase that we all wanted and many of us needed, and really appreciative of it, thank you.
Thank you. Mike Gordon.
Thank you Judge, thank you Commissioners, I'm Mike Gordon, I'm a misdemeanor and felony chief with the DA's office, and I'm kind of the odd one out here in the sense that I've been there for a long time. We don't have a lot of career prosecutors in our office, and the pay has been the reason why. We've been for, in, I just started my 16th year here, and in that time, I've seen us just basically be a farm team for other DA offices. You know, they come here to get trained up, then they get, go somewhere else to get paid, just sort of like the officers do. I think that just ended, I think we are now going to be able to attract and retain career prosecutors, which I think will immensely benefit this county and our office. And I'd also like to put in a word for the officers, for the law enforcement people, and their hazardous duty pay. You know, in the military, if you're in a particularly hazardous occupation, combat, for example, you get combat pay. And these people are essentially doing that for us, the citizens of Nuasis County. They are there during the natural disasters, they are there taking on COVID in the jail, they are out there dealing with violent criminals on a day-to-day basis, I mean, if that, if that doesn't deserve combat pay, nothing does, and I would like to, to put in my word for them, thank you.
Judge, I just wanted to say, I, I've known Mike Gordon since my hair was all black and he had hair, so I mean, he's been in a long... Well, I wasn't gonna say that, so was I.
Doug, Doug Norman.
Thank you Judge, I won't, you know, take up too much time, I just want to thank you as well. I would like to mention one thing, if you don't think this is having an impact, believe me, it is, there is a good friend of mine who worked for our office for a number of years, a fine attorney, who took a job out of state because she had to, she had student loans and it was just burdening her. I texted her what happened here today, and in response, she was like, wow, I can't believe it, I think we would have kept her, you know, with that, so you're, you're gonna have, I think over the long run, you're gonna see a huge increase in, you know, the ability of our office to seek justice for Nuasis County, and we sincerely thank you.
Thank you. I, that concludes the sign-up sheet, but I, I will give you an opportunity if I did not call upon you and you would like to speak, but I will pivot to Cindy, who shows up just as iPad 8, and ask her to unmute. Cindy, would you like to make public comment?
Yes, I would please, first of all, I would like to start by thanking our police officers and their families for the services and sacrifices that you make, I genuinely appreciate that, thank you. Now, I will introduce myself, my name is Cindy Ellis, and my husband and I are new slip owners for, at the Marina del Sol Pier 2 Slips 42 and 43. I am a newly-appointed Director on the Board. I have been aware and watched the Harbor del Sol Marina for numerous years, I am here to share with the Commissioners that in my opinion, the Harbor del Sol Marina HOA has had not had strong leadership in leading their HOA. Since a particular Board member has left their current Board position, the current Board is making tremendous efforts to get things back on track. Over 20 personally-owned slips, and over 50 total if you count the cities, so 75% of the Marina is under new ownership in the past few months, and 10 in just this past week. New members have vast attributes to work as a whole and transparently while deciphering where the HOA stands and to begin moving forward. I implore the Commission to open a new line of communication with the HOA Board after its annual meeting tomorrow, where new Board members will be selected to discuss plans going forward. A discussion with the new Board will be imperative to inform and align the plan the City has to address the sunken boats that are in the slips they are, they foreclosed upon. These sunken boats are and will impede the HOA's effort for cleanup. A discussion will also need to be held regarding the fines the HOA has been issued. I wholeheartedly support the HOA active, keeping the HOA active to allow the community and current Board members the ability to proceed. In my opinion, the majority of the new members, and that's, and those that are current in their responsibilities, is to have a safe Marina that follows its bylaws and its articles of declaration, state, city, county, and federal mandates, and is an attribute to the owners and the community as a whole. In order to do this, the Marina must be given a chance as the new HOA is seated. Oh, I covered my face, I'm sorry. Thank you for your time.
Thank you ma'am. Coming in the courtroom is Shane Peterson, and, let's see, he was waiting in our office? Maybe? We'll give him just a second. Here he comes. Shane, um...
I didn't do it.
I know, you've been voluntold to give public comment, just to give us an update, please, a brief update as to what transpired here this morning, given that we're on the record and also virtually online, it's a nice way to inform the public about their courthouse.
Yes, Your Honor, so this morning, we scheduled a power outage to start at 9:00. In the power outage, we stated that we would be out of power until 11:30, where at which time we would start the temporary generators in order to see about a load on the building. We placed the load on the building at 11:30, we had to adjust a couple of things a few times, and then place the whole load on the building, both the jail and the courthouse, and it passed. We have one little issue that we're resolving, but it didn't stop the generator from running, the building actually ran on one generator, it's a little bit too much power for it, draw on it, but we have the other one being fixed as we speak, and both of the building, or both generators will run the building. We also did the same test at McKenzie Jail Annex, and it actually came out perfect there also.
Thank you, thank you Mr. Peterson. Okay, I see no further comment online, or any hands up, and having completed the commentary here, most of you came today for item number 2A1, so I'll proceed with 2A1, discuss and consider the use of American Rescue Plan Act, otherwise known as the acronym ARPA, for purposes of Nuasis County employee raises, including hazard pay and other related matters. And I can think of no finer way to start an agenda than by having the last 30 minutes with the type of commentary that, that we just heard. I placed this item on the agenda because I do concur, I think that the last year and three-quarters has demonstrated what I already knew, that the character of our law enforcement is as strong as oak, and we are in a, in a moment of truth, so to speak. What will you do when you are entrusted with dollars to do good with? We have the ability, for the first time ever, in my opinion, after looking at the books for, you know, these last three years and historical glimpse, we have an ability to offer hazard pay to our law enforcement. It is due to the federal funding that comes to us from Congress and the President, and as you all know, there is a way to make a calculation, you just have to crunch some numbers. And so therefore, Commissioners, I have crunched the numbers, and I have confirmed those numbers with HR. I do want to say that it is my intention to make a motion for hazard pay for law enforcement, and then I'd like to address differently the ability to help all employees. But as far as hazard pay goes, you will remember that during budget, we had a budget challenge which we met, and that was to adjust for the collective bargaining agreement, so my motion would be that this would not impact that at all, that's separate, that has to do with your agreement, and this would be to commence October 1 of our new fiscal year. It would include all members of law enforcement for Nuasis County, and the number that I do propose is 20%, and that is $2,840,096.54 roughly. I will say that I want to be honest, my little paper here, my cheat sheet, had 10%, 12%, and 15%, and it was my intention to do 15%.
I'll second the motion, because I had 20%.
But what was compelling was you, and I think that you are in a class all on your own, and that is not to diminish the work that all Nuasis County employees have done, especially including the Health Department, the ride-out team, there's just too many to name, but the uniqueness of your work puts you in a different class altogether. And I also want to say that we're in the business, over here in advocacy and public policy, in the business of county attorneys and city, and, I'm sorry, district attorneys of advocacy. And you made a great, great case on Helica for your district attorneys, and that is the reason that 10% was given, because if you don't come and create an argument with justification, it's, it just won't work. But what makes this work is the President of the United States and the Congress who gave us these, this opportunity. The only caveat that I would like to share with you is that there is a, a time period that the statute allows us to work with, and that time period is through 2024, but we only work sort of budget to budget, and so what I would like to suggest is that the 20% will be for the fiscal year, and that we, you know, see where we are, you know, in the next fiscal year, and we can do this all over again or not, but that is my, that is my thought at this moment, and, and I'm happy to hear from, from other Commissioners at this time. Commissioner Chesney, you were gonna say something?
I was, Judge, I support 100% what you're saying, you kind of stole a little of my thunder, and that's great, because I didn't know where we were gonna fall, but that was also a number that I was looking at. My question is, I'd like to do this a little differently, I'd like to look at it as a retroactive and a proactive percentage, because the hazard pay that, that we have should be for the hazardous time that they've already incurred, so I would like to know if it's legal that, and to maybe consider amending your motion to do it retroactive and proactive, so basically, I'm saying twice 20%, meaning we, we need to go back and somehow figure out how to pay them for the hazardous time they've been already, they've already incurred, and pay them for what we know is gonna be the hazardous time going forward. So I support your motion, but I would, 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 would like to go a step further and ask that we do it twice, and, and I think we have the ability to do that, because we're paying, we're, we're paying these people for the time that they've already gone through hazardous, not going forward, so, and that would be 2.8 million retroactive and 2.8 million going forward.
And all I will say is that...
Because we have two chunks of money.
So that, so that they can have certainty, maybe we can, give me a chance to go work with Hagerty, the truth is, the Act, Commissioner, starts from 3-20, is my recollection, March 2020, but I think the way to have the, the opportunity to go forward here with certainty, and we have meetings every two weeks, I bet you wouldn't mind at all to come back for an occasion such as that, and so why don't we go ahead and take the motion, although I'll hear from others, but that way it gives us a chance to work with our FEMA specialists, and I'll go back and see what, you know, what that ability is.
Judge and...
Or we could even do Subject 2, that one might be an opportunity.
I would really like to do it today, I don't, I don't want them to have to keep coming back, because we're taking time away from them and, and from what they need to do, so I, we can either do it one, like I can, we can do this motion, and then I can make my own motion for the retroactive, if that would be preferable, and that one could be contingent upon it being approved.
No, I think, I think we can just make it contingent upon, as long as we make the motion, that it's 20% starting October 1st is absolute certainty, and then we could have, and then Subject 2, you know, refinement, 20%, you know, retroactive, but it would be most likely to the date that the Act allowed us, which if I believe correctly, although I'm gonna look online and see if Kalen's on yet, but I think March 2020 was the date.
Which is a whole year, so that's plenty, that's way more than a year, so I'm good with however we want to voice it, as long as the intent is clear that, to do retroactive 20% and proactive 20%, and that that's what the, the county clerk has that, and the staff has all that, and that that's a good motion for Jenny. I think 100% we can do what you're saying going forward, and I don't think there's gonna be anything that prohibits this retroactive, but again, if we want to have a, you know, just to make double sure that we can do that, but I just want to make sure they all know are there in the room, that this court as a whole is 100% behind them, 100% supports the fact that, in my opinion, there is, and I do not mean this as, as a slight to other employees, and I do want, I think we need to also consider the civilian employees also, I think the people in this room, the civilian employees that also worked in the jail, should be included in this too, not just, you know, because, and I think y'all would probably agree with that, I would hope you would, because those civilian employees who were there on the front lines, not in the jail as much, but were helping and supporting, I would, I would think y'all would support that too, but we need to add some clarification to make sure that that gets included, but, but I have always said, and I think everyone on this court has always said, and it's not a slight to others, there is no one, there is no one in a class of employees, no offense, but higher than law enforcement, in my opinion, that does not degrade anyone else from their jobs, I love all the lawyers, I love all the people that do what they do, the public works folks, I think we're gonna try to help them next, you know, but to me, and I think everyone on this court, and I'm not, I don't speak for everyone, I don't try to, but I don't think anybody's gonna disagree that, that there is no one besides first responders that deserve as much as we can possibly do for them, so that's, you know... So that's, you know, I support the spirit of your motion. That's why I wanted to add to it and make sure we give them as much as we possibly can. Because you're right, we've got, you know, we've got two chunks of money and we've got to do this over a period of time. And that doesn't mean we can't come back again and do it for a third time if we're continuing to be in this pandemic, which it looks as though we could do. And so I strongly support doing it retroactively and proactively. And I just, I don't think there's any doubt. But I do have some clarification and want to, and I'm happy to listen to y'all as far as the civilian folks, to me, they, you know, the civilian in the jails, if y'all don't think that's the right thing.
And we're, well, we're going to get there because that's a whole different discussion. And it needs to be articulated that way because remember, well, let's just, there has to be, in other words, all county employees. Yeah, I appreciate that. Go back to the motion.
Commissioner Chesney just said, if you want to do your motion too.
Yes. Yes, I'll take yours as a second, Commissioner.
And so the intent today is subject to verification on the retro is to do a retro 20% and a pro, and of going forward 20%, where I guess they would get that, that one monthly, right? Is that how you're?
Well, again, I'm going to have to work with the auditors. You're, we're, what I'm going to say is, let's get the motion on file. We have only two weeks till October 1st. We're going to have to ask for your patience just a little bit. But I promise you, it'll be well worth it. But as you know, there is, we need to create that documentation. Even though, by the way, just a little bit of background for these dollars, we got half of them upfront, okay? We have another half coming next year. But it isn't like you just get it and you don't ever have to account for it. There's a tremendous amount of paperwork. And as a matter of fact, tomorrow, we're having the first of a series of workshops with the community to say, how would you like to see these dollars invested? Because there were categories that they wanted us to invest to stimulate the economy, right? That was the whole purpose of it. They wanted us to get paid back for lost revenues and to use those lost revenues as government services. They wanted us to invest in water and sewer infrastructure. They wanted us to invest in broadband access to bridge the digital divide. And they wanted us to look at hazard and premium pay, okay? And also mental health and infrastructure technology. There was a real sense from Congress how they wanted us to look at this. And so even though it's got a big bucket out there, we want to make sure that the community, by the way, I feel very confident when the community hears what this policymaking body has done, they will resoundingly applaud. Having said that, there's still other monies that need to be appropriated. And we want to give the community that opportunity. And that's what tomorrow's session is all about. And so Commissioners, did I, I would like to give you guys an opportunity as well. Commissioner Modest.
Excuse me, Judge.
Commissioner Modest, please.
I agree with the 20% and interesting take on adding it on or retroactive. I would, I support what you're saying, that we just need to make sure that it gets all checked off through Haggerty, through our consultants for this money. It's not that we're saying no. And in fact, I don't even think y'all were asking for 20% again. But it looks like that's what you're going to get, and I totally support that. So I would just say, let the judge work along with staff. See if we can get you the 20% the second time as well and work that out. But I think it looks like, you know, 20% is there and I wholeheartedly support it, believe in it. I do believe also and support that we need to keep these items separate. Because I kind of wrote down, law enforcement is essential personnel, but, you know, like first responder. And that we have essential personnel who were our parks people and our public works who did a lot of the work and set up as well in response to COVID. That didn't necessarily deal hands-on like we see in, out in the field or in the jail. But I think should be at a little bit different level as well, not quite at 20%. But I think there needs to be a few levels, but that my commitment is that everyone get an increase today, at least 10%, at least for all of your fellow county staff. And I do agree with the civilian personnel in law enforcement that had a big part in what y'all do as well. Need to be considered also for the 20% because they were a big part of your team and you being able to do your work also. So that's my commitment and my support, so.
And also, there is a matter of electeds. And so I need to have that offline conversation. Typically, electeds do not, you know, we don't do those types of things. I mean, and so I'm, that would be my motion when we get there, okay? But we just don't, we're in a different, we're in a different class too. And that class is called public service and responsibility. And I don't believe that we're in that business, so.
Agreed.
Yeah, that's understandable.
Yeah. So I'm sorry, Sheriff Hooper, you are also a hero and a first responder. But I think that that would be an important, consistent message to, you know, to have with electeds.
I don't know, Judge. That's a different elected. That's, I'm going to have to, I may have to.
Well, I'm going to have to have that, I'm going to have that discussion with him, as I said. This is not, this is not about one individual today. This is about taking care of his people. And that's, so that's something that we should have differently. Right, I agree.
Excuse me, Judge. Judge, I also agree with Commissioner Chesney and Gonzalez. I believe these people are deserve, well-deserving of this, what Commissioner Chesney proposed. It's been long overdue. I do know of one person that worked in the sheriff's department, not in the jail area, but she also contacted COVID and she didn't go back to work then because she really got sick. So I think everybody should be considered what Commissioner Chesney and Gonzalez have proposed. And I agree with that. And of course, we'll work with our other employees to give them what, you know, a fair also payment, what, you know, that's well deserved, because everybody really put out, put their lives out in danger. So I agree with Commissioner Gonzalez and Chesney.
Okay. Yeah, so I'm going to go ahead and restate my motion and try to clarify. Here we go. Let's try this. So in response to the consideration of the American Rescue Plan Act, otherwise known as ARPA, for purposes of Nwasis County employee hazard pay for law enforcement, including all those, it might be best to say sheriff's office in law enforcement and constables in law enforcement. And again, there might be others that are going to get caught in. And that's why I need to work with Joe, to be honest with you, because I need to see sort of that roster with HR, Joe. There might be somebody in CI, you know.
If I may suggest that maybe we just say everybody in the collective bargaining agreement.
That's the better way to say it.
And that encompasses everybody, including the five constable officers, the Nwasis County Sheriff's Office.
That's an excellent point.
And so that's like the catch-all, everybody who's in the collective bargaining agreement.
Let's go ahead and do that.
What about the civilian employees?
We're going to get there in just a second, Commissioner. We're going to do that with Nwasis County employees because there's ramifications. I realize that, but let's do this first. This motion is for law enforcement right now. The next one has huge implications you need to hear about for HR. So we've got to make certain that we get there. Again, there's, just let's do this piece. Teresa?
Environmental enforcement, are they included in that?
Yes.
They're not part of collective bargaining, though.
But they're not part of collective bargaining, so they would go on the Nwasis side. That's what I'm saying here. I like Joe's suggestion. The collective bargaining encompasses those that are, quite frankly, the ones that we are considering, okay? If the motion becomes, you know, where we wind up, Joe, there's somebody that needs to be considered, we can always come back, right? I mean, this is not a, this is a living, you know.
It's a fluid.
This is a fluid, right, policy that we are creating right now. So again, back to the motion for the clerk, that the motion is to, for the use of ARPA funds to be used for hazard pay for all those under the collective bargaining agreement at the rate of 20% to commence on October 1, 2020, and then potentially contingent upon the ARPA constraints of hazard pay retroactively from perhaps the appropriate date that ARPA allows such designation.
So the clear intent is?
The clear intent is to go retroactive to the extent that ARPA allows, okay?
In conformity with the interim rule, Judge?
And let me tell you why it's tricky, Commissioner Chesney. And just give me a second, Julie. We do not have final rules yet out of ARPA, okay? We're on interim rules. We need, and actually, it's bizarre because they actually use the word final interim rule, but we're not at final, final rules. And that's why the retroactive, to me, was something I wanted to take care of when the statute has its final rulemaking. When they pass these laws in Congress, then they start writing the rulebook, okay? But you've heard our, you've heard our heart and you've heard our intent. Both our mind and our heart will try to get there. But I would like, I like clean motions so that we can have clean directives for the auditor. Having said that, Julie, what can you add?
I would like to include the cadet corrections officers for recruitment purposes.
Okay.
And they're not part of the collective bargaining unit at this time.
And Judge, we concur with that because that's one of our biggest problems is those cadets. And so that would be definitely very beneficial to bringing new blood into sheriff's office and maintaining, and it's a huge retention tool.
Right, but that may not be a, if they're not here yet, that may not be an example of retroactive.
But the ones that are here, we have cadets that are employed and they've been employed for the last year.
That's what I was going to ask.
All right, so we can.
So that way, the retro still covers them too and it doesn't cover people that aren't here.
Right, it would include them, the ones that have been here and working.
That's correct. Okay, so again, it would be those for the clerk under the collective bargaining agreement and those members of the current staff of cadet correctional officers to have them also be included in the retroactive 20%.
Judge, is this going to be upon like signup or is it only members that are already in?
And just, you know, for recruitment, we really do need to work this out. I'd like to hold on that because we can bring it back. We might want to say you have to at least be here for six months to, you know, to, again, when we talk about being a training ground, we want to make certain that we, I think that's something, Joe, we could sit and work through.
Okay. And to answer your question, Commissioner Modest, everybody, all our positions are fully funded. So like the constable's office, all those positions are encompassed already. So everybody, you know, they fall under the umbrella where they're, you know, whether there's a vacancy or not, those people are already there and they're budgeted at 100%.
No, I know. I'm just saying, I don't want somebody showing up day one, getting their 20% and taking off. So we've got to put a time constraint on that. All of you who are in here since however long.
The retro pay, I mean, I don't know how you guys are going to do that. If you do it as a one-time lump sum, that's up to you. But going forward, we can go as a, you know, as a day by day.
You know, to be honest with you, what I really wish the court would consider is making this a clean motion for 20% for October 1 going forward. And then give me at least two weeks to put something together that really helps identify. It's better than letting, misleading somebody or.
Judge, I think we could do it, what I suggested earlier was do it in two motions. One, if you want to make it clean, because I don't want anybody leaving here.
Hey, I don't think they're leaving here with anything but smiles.
But if it's not a motion and voted on, then it's not final and everybody knows that. So, I mean, I think you could make it in two clean motions, which is what I suggested earlier. And you just make the first motion that it's 20% and they get it, they get it monthly going forward. And then you make a second motion and you say, subject to the legalities, they get a one-time retro pay for the, for those, you know, and it's got to be for how long they were here, right? I mean, if they were here six months, they're retro paying for six months.
Right, all I'm saying to you, yeah, all I'm saying is that I think through Joe and our counsel, we can work out a document that makes sense for everybody. And I'm happy to have a motion to memorialize the spirit of the document. But I would like to finalize that document in another court proceeding so that you guys also bless it. You also, I'm certain, don't want to have somebody waltz in, right? And not have, there's got to be some parameters that you want as well that I think that when we work together can solidify what would be a great recruitment tool. Because that's the point of the cadets being put forth, is that it's a wonderful recruitment tool. But it's not wonderful if, as Commissioner Modest says, they come in and then there's some sort of a revolving door. And by the way, there's all kinds of great templates and precedents for doing these types of recruitment tools on what they call the premium pay. So if that's acceptable, I would like to hear from Joe, I mean, what you think, if there's advantages there.
You know, I would like for the court to make the motions today so we can at least vote on it and then we can move forward and have another sit down, a little down, you know, further down the road. But our intent today, I'm sure everybody's in concurrence with me, but we just want to get it done today.
Yeah, no doubt. And not because we're going to memorialize it, just want to articulate that the detail with regards specifically when you're putting in the cadets that we work that out.
And then we can sit down, you know, you, the county attorney, Julie and myself
Absolutely.
and our people with CLEAT and we can, you know, we can hash out those things out down, a little down the road. But let's get the, you know, let's get the deal done.
Do you want both motions today?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, well, again, I already, we're good. We have one motion.
Right, we would, well, I think we should. If you want a clean motion, I would again suggest that we start over. You make your motion, what you originally made, and then I'll make a second motion, what, that I added. And then you have two clean motions and it's not confusing and we go on down the road.
Well, I think.
What's that? No.
Listen, I'll, I'll.
Because they want it now. Retro's now.
Just so you know, I don't think it's a problem. I think the motion stands, quite frankly. All I'm letting you know is that we're going to bring back a document that helps you figure out how to really create a great retainment program.
We're good with it, Judge.
I think that's fine. So as they say, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. We have one motion.
Judge, while they're.
Judge, on behalf of the Nwasis County Sheriff Officers Association and CLEAT, we want to thank you guys, you know, it definitely shows us that you guys, you know, definitely put your money where your mouth is and that goes a long ways. And this is going to very, very boost morale with the constable's office and also within the sheriff's office. And we are very grateful for that. Thank you very much on behalf of everybody.
Thank you.
Judge, I wanted to bring up.
Thank you, Julie.
I wanted to bring up one other thing while they're here is I wanted to address the deceased officers. Some, I wanted, I don't know if we need to make that as a specific motion. I think they need some hazard pay. I don't know how that would work, but I want to make sure that their family's included in this and the hazard pay. And I want to make sure that gets.
And Commissioner, that's a great idea. That's something that gets me and the county judge and Julie can work on once we meet again. To kind of hash out the details.
Do we need to make that as a motion to make sure that's included? Because I want to make sure that they get included in this. So I would just move that the deceased.
Up to you if you want to make a motion.
I want to make that motion.
Wait, wait, a second. Okay, so all we have.
The deceased officer family is included in the retro hazard pay for as long, you know, as long as back as we can go, as we're going.
That'd be great.
I think, I think, I think I would just do it as a, an addendum, you know?
I made a motion. I just want to do it as a motion, so I mean, I don't want to.
Okay, that's fine. I would just say that we, will you restate it so for the clerk?
Yes, Judge, I would just make a motion that the deceased officer's family is included in the hazard pay for the Sheriff's Officer Association and the collective bargaining.
Second motion.
It wasn't very well said, but I think you know what I meant. Thanks.
Okay. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Okay.
You guys be safe and God bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much, and we really appreciate everything you do. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Y'all be safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
And thank you, Julie.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Commissioners.
Are you staying on this item for more votes? Are you staying on this item for more votes of the?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. So sorry. I don't know what, I think it was just the noise in the back. Okay, um, just give it a chance. It's so, what happens is the noise in the room affects the video. So let's hang on that just for a moment, till those doors. Okay, so now we're going to move to basically discussing employee raises. And Julie's got new numbers, as you might imagine.
And this is hazard pay, Judge, not raises, right?
Actually, it's not. It's not hazard pay. I want to. It would be called premium pay. So hazard pay has a little bit of a different nuance. Let me just, let's go ahead and have the discussion. And then to be honest with you, I think the Haggerty team, and they've sent me a document.
So we can do premium pay for a regular, for a non-first responder?
The idea, yeah, the idea would be. Well, the idea, yeah, the idea would be here is, um, as Commissioner Modas had said, that, um, Neoces County employees, if we were to do, and I've got to get my, my, is Julie, did she leave? Darn it. Okay, let's see if I can get her back, but I think I've got the numbers right here. If, um, if somebody could get her, that would be really helpful. I've got it right here, never mind. Okay, so remembering that this is a one-year in effect, uh, potential raise, and, um, if you were, and the DA's already, we just gave them the 10%. So if these, what this, these numbers I provide to you are excluding those 10%.
DA's are.
Okay, correct. And of course, excluding what we just did here. And if you did, um, a 10% increase, and there are, it's a, it's a huge number, so I'm gonna have Julie come in and give you what that population is, that census, but it's 3.3, 3.326.960, so $3,326,000 for 10%. And, um, it goes all the way to, um, uh, for 12%, it's $4 million.
So Judge-
And my, excuse me, if I could just finish.
My bad.
Um, my concept here was that this one requires a tremendous amount of effort with the auditor's office and with Hagerty on qualifying people. And my suggestion here was to start this particular 10% on January 1, because that would give us three months to truly create, um, quite frankly, the mechanism in order to do this.
Is this past January or this coming January?
It would start, it's for this fiscal year. It's just to create an opportunity for, for our folks to have a, and cross the board, what we, what we could not do in budget, right? What we did in budget was tackle the district attorney's office and some selective offices, um, like the county attorney's one and two positions, okay? That's, that's about-
ARPA.
In, in ARPA, all right? But what we did not do is everybody else. And so the proposal is excluding electeds. If we were to do 10% across the board, and we could qualify that, um, starting January 1, um, that would be 3.3, well, actually, these numbers, Julie, were on a 12-month basis. So it'd be a little less, but 3.3 million is 10%. And then, um, let me go back to your numbers, I just got them off. And then 4 million is the, um, 12%.
That's a full year, Judge.
That's a full year. And then 15% is 5 million. And so my proposal was, since we did 10% for the DA, and that is half absorbed in the general fund, um, in order to be consistent, if we were going to be consistent, the idea was 10% across the board would be 3.3 million dollars. And we could, we could begin that at January 1, and then, uh, run through the fiscal year.
I, uh, I didn't want to mess up the numbers because I know there's a lot of time and effort put into them, but as I mentioned earlier, uh, when our law enforcement was in here, I mean, I, I kind of came up with three quick levels, and, and, and the second would be essential personnel. And to me, that's our public works, that's our inland parks, our coastal parks, any one of that staff, social services, uh, who were apart day in and day out, 5:00 in the morning, getting out there, close proximity, setting up all our barricades, all of our facilities, from Memorial Coliseum, um, helping out American Bank Center with our city partners, all the way to Robstown and, and the parts out into the rural part of the county. Uh, they, they did a lot of above and beyond work. Uh, and I think that that's what, to me, premium pay should be for that group. I know it may be hard to, to categorize every position because someone may say, oh, well, I was booked one day to cover this. I, I would say it's gotta be the groups that were essentially there, um, pretty much on a daily or a regular basis when we were called for testing or for vaccine administration and now for infusion. So, like I said, I'm thinking inland parks, I'm thinking public works, uh, just to name at least those two, and there may be more. But those, to me, are important that we set at a, at a higher rate, even maybe a 12% if we do everyone else at least a 10. And that covers and honors the work that they did and the, their early mornings and late nights that they had for days and days, weeks on end without breaks. So that would be all I would ask that we can include. The numbers, we can talk all about them all day, but if we could at least make that distinction a little bit higher, I think that would be important for me.
I agree with the Commissioner, but I think I would add the code enforcement because they were out there helping also. And not only that, but they go through trash trying to find things when there's a, you know, there's something out there to find who's, who belongs to. So I would, I would put, I would include the code enforcement officer with those three. So it's a four, four divisions. Code enforcement, inland parks, coastal parks, and-
I think you're gonna find a very hard-pressed argument to find out who was not essential in COVID. I would suggest that if it were not for the county clerks, I could not have posted any orders. If it were not for the district clerks, I would not have been able to run the courts during COVID. If it were not for, that's gonna be the hard part, and I'll be honest with you, um, there is, there is a finite amount of dollars, and so what you want to do is allow yourself to reward the premium pay and let it do its job to stimulate this economy and to reward. But I would, I would say that, um, think about, um, think about what it's gonna be like if you, if you find, you know, there might, I'm gonna agree with you, when Rebecca Rock went inside people's homes, she is at a different level than when somebody's safely inside their home, working remotely or a courthouse. But it doesn't have, but we all sort of work in tandem. And what I, I wrestled with is how we were gonna differentiate. The only differentiation in my mind is, um, is inside the jail. And that is why law enforcement is at a completely different, uh, location. And everybody else has to be treated equally, otherwise you're gonna have a lot of discontent.
I agree, I kind of agree with that.
But I, but I really appreciate it because the people that, that you're mentioning did find themselves in harm's way.
Right. And Judge, that's the struggle for me on this one. The law enforcement was easy. This is a struggle for me because, and I, I, I mean, I think we've done so much for employees and we can always do more, but I'm trying to figure out what this premium pay is supposed to be about because there were a lot of our employees who never were in harm's way because they stayed at home and they worked. It doesn't mean they did, but, and they did their jobs and they got full pay, and they got full PTO, and they didn't get furloughed. And so I think there's a great distinction between those people and the people who had to get out and work in the fields all the time. So I think there are two very distinct categories of people that we should be, be looking at because quite honestly, and I know this doesn't make me real popular, but I'm gonna be honest, there's an argument that says there's some that maybe should they get premium pay at all. Now, I'm not advocating that, I'm saying, okay, if we can legally do this, and that's what these funds are for, okay, but just because we have this pot of money, we shouldn't just spend it, just to spend it, we need to make sure it works, in my opinion. And number two, I think there are distinct categories of people that were out in the field on a regular basis, and we could argue about that, but I think it's important to say, look, for the people who got to stay at home and not come to work and not ever put themselves in harm's way, that's an advantage that they got. That is a huge advantage that they got, that the others didn't, and so therefore, there should be a distinction for those who were in harm's way and for those who weren't. And I think to not try to go through that list and do it is not, is not fair or proper. It's not, it's not, I mean, I'm sure if we'd have said, hey, we're gonna give you premium pay, some of them might have come to work more and not, might have stayed home, but we didn't know that was out there. But if what we're trying to do is say, look, for those of you who went the extra mile, this, you're getting the extra pay, then we've got to be consistent, and consistent means we may have to take the time to really go through this one and say, okay, where's the line, right? And, and no offense, but there are a lot of departments that, they, they never were in harm's way, and they didn't lose their job, their PTO. If they, if they qualified for overtime, they got it. So they were already paid for all these things. This is an extra level that we're trying to say, hey, law enforcement, you went the extra 10 miles, right? Here's the next group that went the extra three miles, and, and here's the group that, well, okay, they did their jobs, stayed at home, we appreciate the heck out of them, we paid them, we didn't furlough them, whatever, and we're still gonna give you something. But I do feel like there's a distinction, and I think we have to take the time to make that distinction. If I'm in the minority on that, I'm okay with that, that's life, we move on. But I do think it's worth at least taking some time to go through that, and if we do it today, great. If we don't, that's fine. Uh, if we, and again, we can send the message, hey, we're gonna give somebody, we're gonna give people something, but we just can wait and figure out who that is. Or y'all can vote it today, and that's okay. I, I put my feelings on the record, and I can live with whatever the court does.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I do want to tell you, there's a lot of rules when it comes to salaries, and on that 20%, um, I need to, uh, let you know that, uh, this is why I need, we need time to work with the auditor's office. There is, uh, an aggregate amount not to exceed 25,000, I think they already knows that.
What does that mean, to not exceed, how's that work?
25, that's what I'm saying to you, there's just a ton of, so I have to, I have to be very thoughtful about working with them. There's also, um, when you do, um, uh, premium pay, uh, in an amount up to $13 per hour in addition to wages, um, just, there are rules as to when you say, what is premium pay? So I just have to tell you that what we could do is, in the spirit of what we did for law enforcement, is, um, you know, my intention is to make a, um, a motion to, um, have across the board 10%. And then to, again, to have it started on January 1 because that gives us time to make certain, there's different categories of folks. For example, if I took, let's say, the medical examiner, just take example, and we know that his pay is X, I can tell you that 10% of his pay is greater than the $25,000, right? So that would not, that would not work, right? And so it would be less than. So what I was hoping is in the spirit of, there are very few, uh, job titles that have those types of salaries, it would be fair to say that it would affect very few people, the 25,000, very few.
Can we, can we differentiate and still add on, like if we did 10%, but say 2% additional hazard pay for-
Yeah.
-list out positions? So I, I just, because I think we've already cut, we, we know some, and there's so many more, like, I totally forgot about medical examiner and-
Yeah.
-read an article about all these MEs and their staff getting contaminated-
Right.
-all these scenarios that they've been in all over the country. So, uh, they would need to be added, but capped at a level. But I, I just, like I said, I, I don't, I mean, we can talk all day on, if it's 10%, I think that's great. Do we go up for 12, you know, add the 2% maybe hazard, hazard pay to make that difference? Just to show that they are and were in scenarios that are, are dangerous, more dangerous, I agree, than if you are able to be remote or in the office. But let's not discount, we had entire departments wiped out, uh, from COVID, so I mean, everyone was exposed. But if we can add in the hazard pay for those positions and, and allow you and Julie time to work up a list along with the auditors and, and of course, counsel on this, to give us that, that difference. I, I just, I agree. If it's 10%, great, 10% across the board, but there's gotta be a little, at least a little bump because to acknowledge what, what they're doing.
How, how do we know that, why, why did we come up with the number today if we're not even sure about all the rules and regulations? I mean, how are we voting on this percentage with premium pay? We, we knew a lot about the law enforcement pay because that was hazard pay. I'm just trying to figure out, why can't we just pass a motion that says we're gonna give a raise and come back with the numbers later because we don't even know all the rules? We're sitting here, I can't even get all my questions answered on the rules.
Well, if, if, again, if, just a little bit of, take a deep breath, there are, we had a document that was produced, uh, earlier this year regarding the interim final rules, and there is a recognized essential critical infrastructure sector. So there's people that are automatically in those sectors, like public health, healthcare, education, transportation. And then it defines premium pay, but if premium pay would increase a worker's total pay above 150% of their residing state average, which I don't think this would do, given that here's where, here's where Neoces County can help their workers, when you're so low, we're not really in danger of going 150%. But because of the corn fairy study, Julie has already kind of looked at that, and we know exactly where we were. Let me give you a great example. I asked Julie, if you put everybody 10% across the board, what would that do to the 25% of the 85% of the annual median salary? And she said, I said, would it get us to 25%? She said, absolutely not. So that is how you know that you are so low. Because if you, so I believe we, we can be very comfortable with 10%. Having said that, if we allow the process to begin in January, we could bring forth a complete document, right? But just like you gave to law enforcement, you wanted them to leave with certainty. It's my desire to have all county employees know that they're valued. And then if you want to come back and do a 2% on top for hazard pay for certain, uh, groups based upon a justification, we could, we could look at that, but-
And do that retroactive too, Judge?
Um, so the way the rule works is it starts at the, at the time the public emergency starts. And so the way you know when that starts is when the governor declared the disaster. And that is why I use the date, March, okay? So March of 2020 is when I issued the local disaster, the same day, like an hour later after the governor. And so I believe, you know, you have to be, you have to understand what the dollars are. I mean, I do agree with Commissioner Chesney, I mean, um, it's very important to put forth what your will is, which is what this object of this agenda item is, but you should also know what the dollars and cents are, because that's, that's what we call responsibility. So I, I think that, um, just like you wanted to share with law enforcement, we can basically say that it's the spirit of the motion to provide for Neoces County employees, uh, starting January 1. And, you know, that was, that was going to be my motion. And if you want to do, um, more, that, that's something that, that we could talk about, but at least start at the floor. You can always build to a ceiling, but the floor is 10% in my mind, and it starts January 1 to give us a chance to work with the auditor's office to find out, to make certain that all the rules regarding the 150%, the 20, there's three rules. It's the 150% of the state average not to exceed, 25,000 not to exceed, and then there's like an hourly wage, $13 per hour not to exceed. Francis goes doing that, yeah. And we've done, we have been going over these, um, quite, quite frequently with the auditor.
And so hazard pay is pretty, pretty obviously defined. It's a one-time type situation for hazard. This is premium pay, meaning-
A fiscal year.
Right, but meaning that everyone needs to understand that at the end of it, it goes away.
That's correct.
Right, whatever it is.
As does the hazard.
No, right, absolutely, but I want to, again, because people get used to seeing it in their checks.
No, it needs to be very defined.
People need to be understanding of that. But again, I just, I don't know, and I don't, this is, I, I want to give everybody something. I just think we need, I just, I just think the categories need to be defined, and I think there's a large difference, and if everybody else doesn't, then okay, I'll, we can afford, but I just think we're, I don't think we're sending the right message to, to give the same amount to everyone across the board. I just don't think it's right. I, I don't discount the people that, that, you know, there's nothing wrong, I didn't do anything wrong, but I just, I just think it's wrong to just give it across the board because that, that, to me, that says to the people who were out there the wrong thing, and it says to the people who stayed at home and didn't have to be in harm's way, they got a great deal out of it, and I appreciate that.
Right.
I just-
I understand your perspective, I just liken it to the military. The guy that's running comms to the SEALs, if he didn't have comms, those SEALs wouldn't be able to do their job. They're in harm's way, but the guy on the radio is making the life and death decisions and relaying it. And I'm going to tell you, if you take IT.
That's a rough comparison, Judge. That's a really rough comparison to compare.
Maybe because honestly.
No offense, but to compare people in, and I'm not picking on, but to compare people in HR are running the comms to where we can't survive. I don't, I'm sorry, I don't mean to pick on HR, but that, they, they have a very important role. But we paid them, they got overtime, they did all these things.
Okay, well.
There's other departments that I could say too, I just, I think.
I understand that, I just think that, that, I understand that's your perspective.
I'm just saying, I agree.
I just feel very differently since, quite frankly, I know exactly how, for example, if IT did not support those in the field, we would not be able to save lives. Because everything runs with IT.
But they got paid well, and they, they stayed at home, and they got paid well, and they got overtime, and they got furloughs.
Okay, it's just to.
And they got super well-paid while people were losing their jobs. So we've got to distinguish, but if y'all don't want to.
I hear you, I hear your perspective. But, but the history of our, our county and the corn fairy study indicates differently.
That's different, Judge. That's a whole different argument, too. The corn fairy study has nothing to do with this.
Okay, I hear you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So, um, Commissioner?
I just want to make sure I got this right. So in January, but we're going to do the same thing we did with law enforcement, where in January be retroactive pay, right?
So law enforcement's totally different.
But no, no, but the first 10,000 that we're going to do with the employees.
10%.
10%.
I'm sorry, 10%, that's going to be the retroactive pay, right?
No, she's saying that would be different.
It's just right now. It just says, right now, for 2021, 2022.
You're saying hazard is different than premium. Hazard can be treated differently than premium, is what I think you're saying. So you can't do retro, premium.
You know, you probably could. I want to be honest with you. I believe that I read the statute that you could. But what I'm suggesting this court do is just acknowledge that in this budget cycle, we wanted to do more. But all we could do, for those of us that did it, was vote to do 10% for the DAs. And we did tackle a few with ARPA, like the county attorneys on her two positions. We did that, but that's all we could do. What today's agenda item is about is saying, what if we had more money? What would you have done? And I'm here to offer that the American Relief Plan Act, as I read, premium pay allows us to do more for this one moment in time. And it, and I agree with you, it needs to be clearly articulated that it's a moment in time. And then it goes away. And, and the only thing I would suggest to give us time to do it correctly is start at January 1. Now, does that seem, and then if, for example, for the DAs, they have longevity, right? Because we know that we put it in the budget, 50% of which was funded by the general fund. So in my opinion, they have more, they're on more solid rock, right? Because they know they're going to continue because they're in the budget. These don't know that they're going to be in the budget. I would love it if it would be able to be sustainable. But at, at $3.3 million a year, I doubt that that's sustainable, right? So I just, I believe that we can have it for this one year. And to say, um, it has taken a tremendous, um, toll on our county and everybody, every department. There's not one department that hasn't been affected, I don't believe, for COVID. I think every department has had COVID positives, or, you know, COVID in, in their family, with their dependents. Um, we've asked extraordinary things, um, you know, of them, so. So that is the difference. But I don't want you to leave with premium pay not being able to go backwards. I think the rules might be able to accommodate that, but I'm not suggesting that. I'm just saying, January 1 to the end of our fiscal year, that's when we would start a 10% across the board for employees. That's, that's the motion.
Or, can I just, for discussion, if, if you're going to get it. So, again, if you're going to, if you're going to say, if the theory is, we're paying them for what they did, then shouldn't it be a one-time retro payment only? And do it retro for them only, and not do it forward because, until, until next year for them? Because they've already gone.
You know, it works out actually the same amount of months. And if, if that makes everybody happy, the only thing is, is that, um, um, it's, it is the same thing on the amount, on the amount of months. If I calculate January, February, and March.
Well, maybe, yeah, maybe.
You see, I'm saying it's either.
We could do it for a certain, you could do it for the same certain period of time, retro that you're proposing.
Right. I think it's nine months in here or nine months back.
Right, so if you're.
It's, that's just a philosophy. I don't think it would matter to the employee.
They'd probably regret it now.
Whether it's nine months yesterday or nine months tomorrow, but, because it's going to get paid at the same, same exact time.
So, I mean, if you did it, you know, if you, if you're paying.
The one time you already look at it.
Yeah, if you're paying.
You could categorize it that way.
You could say, if the premium, right, a nine-month premium pay retro at whatever percentage the court comes up with, and that's what we do today.
I have no problem with that. I mean, I think that it turns out to be exactly the same. The only thing I'm going to ask is a little bit of grace, because we do have a lot of work to do on, on making certain that, um, as I said, that nobody falls inside that strange little parameter. And, um, we just have to make sure that that works. And then there's the other thing, which recognizes that COVID continues, right? So the court would be acknowledging that, um, we would end at the, um, see, from, from, are you going to, if you end it on the fiscal year, it shortens the time. But if you're just saying it's an amount of months from now, right? In March, it really shortens the time period.
Yeah, I, I'm just saying, if we're, if we're trying to.
I could just say nine months.
Yeah, I, I, if we're trying to give these people pay for what they went through, because we don't know what the future holds, right? Then, we know, I mean, I feel certainly that, that law enforcement's going to be in the middle of this forever. I don't know that I feel certain that that's the case with everybody else. So you could say a nine-month retro, one-time payment of whatever percent the court wants to come up with, and I, you know.
I'll amend. I think that that's, I think particularly if it gets you to vote with us, I'll amend. I think that that makes perfect sense. I want to, I've got an amendment to that motion that, that it become, um, and the reason I said nine months is because that's, I'm counting January to September. So, um, nine-month retroactive, um, premium pay for all county employees at 10%. And that means if you joined today, you wouldn't get it, right? Because you would get one day, or, 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 you know.
And, and the only thing that I would just ask for consideration on this is to come up with some differentiation. And if the answer's no, the answer's no, but I still think there should be categories. And maybe it should be, as John's, maybe it should be.
More.
Eight and 12, or, you know, something that's, you know, there's a little more spread. I don't want to get too close to law enforcement, because I think they ought to be way ahead of everyone else. John keep throughout the 12 number, so I'm, I'm just, again.
The only, the only difficulty with this, and, and I'm going to bring it up, is the district attorney's office. Because the dollars that I had, okay, don't count them. So I just need to disclose that. If you're going retroactive, it would not, right? So if you're going to, if you're saying to the district attorneys, this is for past work, then they would have to be included, and that would be another half million dollars. The reason I had set it up from January on is because the DAs were already taken care of on that 10% for the future.
That's a good point.
You see, that, that is why I set it up that way.
That's a fair point. That's a fair point.
And that way, it's, it's a consistent, so if, but if, but I think that the spirit of it is, is that we're trying to create a scenario today in real time that helps our families. And, you know, it's not for us to say how you use those dollars, whether you save them, whether you spend them, whether they help you alleviate medical bills or student loans, but we know it will help.
But, okay, Judge, and that, that's a very good point, but here's another point. Let's say, if we're trying to give premium pay for people who've been here, and people leave, and new people come on, and they get premium pay, because they didn't, they weren't even here, let's, because, you know, like all the new hires, that's going to get, because if we do the going forward and it's across the board, then that's going to include someone who comes in as a new hire, who didn't do anything for the county during COVID. How do you deal with that, too? I think that's got to be, you can't give new, new hires that have been here.
Um, what we could do is, is, that's why I wanted to do January 1, because we know we have some new hires coming in, okay? And, um, I thought if we started at January 1, that would give us time to have everybody settle in. Because remember, there, there were new positions that were granted by our budget. And the truth is, we are still in COVID.
So your, your January 1 proposal does not include the DA office?
That does not.
Okay, you've discussed that with the DA office, and just to be sure.
Like I said, it just, all it does is say to them what they said in here, is we want everyone to get 10%. We wish everybody could get 10%.
And they get 10% forever.
And they get 10% forever. So theirs is locked and loaded. Ours, this one is just a one-year, um, and really less than a year. It's nine months, but it is a tremendous boost that you could, that you could really plan for, knowing the first of the year, you've got this, you know.
It could be two years, who knows?
Well, again, it's all about the amount of dollars that you want, you know, everybody wants, but no one's really putting, I mean, sharpen the pencil, right? You want to solve drainage, you want to solve broadband, you want to solve world bees, you want to solve economic development, you know? Something's got to give. What I'm offering you is an opportunity to change people's lives in a way that we never get to do, but let's do it equitably. And then I'm with you, Commissioner, if you want to see how this shakes out, and then you really want to pinpoint certain departments for an additional two, what I'm suggesting is today that we articulate the floor, what the ground rules are, 10%. And then if we come back, so be it. But give us a chance to work with the auditor's office to see what that means. And I would, you know, I'm happy for you even to initiate, because you, you brought up some excellent departments.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I'm fine with today. I mean, I, I, I agree. Let's set the ground floor. Let's let everyone know where we're at, what we appreciate and recognize that they went through. And then we come back, and then we add, you know, add on for those who really, uh, like I said, went above and beyond that were out there multiple hours, multiple days, uh, every week for weeks on end. So, uh, as long as we do that, I have no problem bringing that back. I don't want to, uh, delay this issue anymore. But we can at least.
Thank you.
Put the word out that we're at 10, and then we'll come back for those specific departments. And hey, if somebody's watching and they feel their department or their particular employees need to be a part of it, then let us know. But, you know, we've already listed three or four, I think, departments, you know, social services, public works, in the parks, uh, medical examiner, and I'm sure there's a few others.
Emergency management.
Emergency, well, they, they definitely need to be up there, yeah.
So, okay, so I think, Kara, nothing really changes, except for that I'll restate it again, uh, because we've kind of morphed it a couple of times. But my, my, my motion is, is to designate, um, American Rescue Plan Act funds for the purposes of premium pay for Nuasus County employees, um, at a, at a rate of 10%. But, um, obviously, when I say Nuasus County employees, we've already dealt with those under the collective bargaining agreement, including the cadet, um, correctional officers, and we've already dealt with the district attorney's offices. So those would not be included, along with the, um, the, um, the two county attorneys that also perform.
Health department is separate.
And health department is separate. So, and I can help you. We can go back, you and I, and look at the tape, but, but I think that.
I got it, I'm good.
The gist of it is, is, is articulated. And that, oh, this is important, Kara, and that we would, uh, start at January 1.
Start January 1.
Through the end of the fiscal year. And then we can work on it from there. Yes.
There may be an issue with timing. There are some, there's some language about the obligations not being incurred prior to March 3, 2021, and the definitions of premium pay. So that, that might require further research.
Okay, how about if we just say nine months? And that way, we can decide which nine months work? Would that be?
Nine, nine.
How about subject to, in other words, I'll just say that subject to the refinement of the, of the time period. But the intention, Jenny, is January through September, and then maybe you can assist us if it has to be, you know, August through whatever, you know, through March or April. Right? And again, I want to make sure we go through all those wages and all of that particular. It's basically 48 through 51 of the interim final rules, pages 48 through 51. That's what I have on my notes. And by the way, this is very important. We do have to make a justification how this premium pay is responsive to performing essential work during the public health emergency. Okay? So, again, we have work to do, but I think that the intention is there. I think I know how to make a case. So, but, but it's going to be important that you have patience with us, Julie, that as we, as we go through, um, I've watched other counties do this, and, uh, they just make a declaration. I want to make sure that we have the, the proper paperwork, okay? So. Do I hear a second?
A second. You had a second.
You did, sir. All right, Commissioner Gonzalez had his second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post him sign.
Judge, I'm just going to abstain, because I truly want to support the raises. I just, on the record, want to state, I think there should have been more categorization before we went forward. So that's my reason.
Understood. Thank you, sir. All right, um, the next thing is discuss and consider approval of release of ARPA funds for the Attorney 3 to, uh, legal positions for the county attorney's office for the fiscal year 2021 and 2022 to the auditor's office. Um, and so, uh, what we want to do here is get Jenny some folks. And in order to do that, we need to actually move forward, and that way you can get jobs posted. Is that correct?
Yes, Judge, and I have our CPS attorneys, I believe, are on Zoom, in case the court has any questions for them regarding the caseload and how it's increased during COVID. Uh, I believe the court is, uh, absolutely aware that courts have been shut down, and CPS cases are not stopping. And so while they are having their caseloads added on to, they are not able to dispose of cases. We have children staying in hotel rooms with CPS workers overnight. We have children sitting in the CPS offices all day, in the desk next to workers. This is a bad situation.
But I, I'll make a motion to approve the release of these ARPA funds. I just need to move to my notebook to.
Is this number two, is the same thing as number two on number B?
Uh, is it, is it the same as what, sir?
Number two on A is the same thing as number two on B? B and A, human resources, the number two, is that the same one?
We're going to need.
A job description.
Job descriptions also. We tried to start the process, but we need an actual final additional okay on both the money being released and the job descriptions.
So are we doing this under, under 2A1?
Yeah, 2A2, Brent, 2A2. But we do, there is a ministerial piece of it, which is under human resources.
I must have an old agenda. I'm sorry, I don't have that on my agenda.
2A2?
Oh, 2A2 to me is ABM. I guess I have the right agenda.
Well, I'm, I've got 2A2.
Okay, I don't have the right agenda.
Okay, let me.
My bad, I'll find it.
All righty. But let me just read it again. It's the approval of the ARPA funds, the release of it, so that, uh, she can get these postings and then know that the position is funded. That we've already approved it. We just need to get the release.
Please, Judge.
Yes, sir.
As we're doing that, is there any way we can add two more positions to that, to the ARPA funds?
Well, that's what this is.
No, no, but I add two more other positions. Instead of we're doing this positions.
You want to have, um, he wants to know whether two more would be needed.
We'll take it. We'll take it right here, right now.
No, not for you, Jenny, for somebody else.
Well, I don't know what you're talking about. I mean, did you?
Can we add two more positions for another department here on this one here, or do we have to wait for the human resources?
Yeah, I mean, this is for exactly what it says. It just says, can we, I have a motion to release the funds for, for the county attorney's positions.
Okay.
Let's do that first.
Okay.
Okay, motion, I have a motion to release those funds. We've already, you know, approved these in budget. Motion and a second. And, and if, just so you got it in your back, okay, in your background, um, it basically talks about how it's funded for one year. And, um, I, they, honestly, I did, I had it with me, and then I've misplaced it, but there is a fiscal, uh, uh, piece to this, and it wasn't in here, but can you remind us how much that would be? Do you remember? Okay, in just a minute, if you don't mind, when we get to the human resources, tell me what it is. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Jenny, I kind of remember, is it like 75?
For all three positions? It's, I have the letter.
A piece, it was like 220, 225, maybe?
It was a legal assistant one, an attorney two, and an attorney three.
I feel like it was 220, somewhere around there.
That sounds.
Okay. All right, so just to keep everybody just in keeping with what's going on. All right, um, hey, just to be, like, make it make sense, and, uh, Julie was here, but on the human resources, can I also get a motion to approve the job descriptions and the posting for this exact, uh, item?
No, Judge, I've got a completely different motion. I don't want to, that's what I want to discuss.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, then I'll just get to it in a little bit, all right?
Okay, thank you.
Because she's not here. I'll call her right back.
He was, she was asking about B.
For the, for the attorneys?
For B2.
Oh, B2, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, my bad. Yes, I, I would move for B2, yes. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Okay, that's fine.
I thought you said one, my bad.
No. Okay, so I'll take that as a motion to, to approve the job description and posting, and I'll second that motion. And all the, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post him sign. Okay, so Jenny, work with Julie, and let's see if we can get you some wonderful people.
Yes, Judge, and if the, if the CPS attorneys, Nicole and Crystal, might have the opportunity to, to express their gratitude.
Hi, uh, Crystal.
Hi, Judge.
They just, they just put it through. We're going to get the new people to help you, and I thought you might want to thank the court.
Yes, we are very appreciative of having the opportunity to get a new CPS attorney and secretary. I came from the DA's office, and I did not ever expect. I came from the DA's office, and I did not ever expect to be this busy. And as the year has gone by, since I've been with the county attorney's office, the caseload has just increased in more and more. Every week, every hearing that we have, it turns into an additional hearing. So an additional attorney to help take some of that pressure off of us would really allow us to, I believe we'd be doing the same amount of work, but we would definitely be able to put out better quality work. And I think as attorney, that's something that is very important to us.
Really appreciate your comments. Thanks, Nicole, for being with us as well. And although I know the court appreciates your thanks, the truth is, it feels awkward. We really ought to be thanking you. And this is, we hope, a remedy to a very serious situation. And we look forward to getting that posting out for you, maybe even today, if the job's ready, if the job description's ready.
Judge, I'd just like to thank whoever created these attachments. Nice, bold letters, only funded for one year. I think that's so important, you know. As you look at other, how other governments practice, and they really indicate, you know, it's grant funded or limited funding. And so I think that's just a good reminder, and I appreciate that, being a part of the, the attachments for the meeting.
I think that's appreciated. Thank you. Nicole, we, again, Crystal, again, thanks for joining us, and, and keep us posted, you know. Let us know how this is making an impact. I'm certainly cognizant that it takes a while to bring onboard somebody. And, but if you choose that right somebody, boy, it could make a big impact. And I think it'd be good to know how, you know, we're trying to create, I guess, a, an after-action report as to how we're using these funds. I want the public to know what we're doing and how it's making an impact in their community. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You bet.
God, for what you do.
Yes, yes, sir. Okay. Okay, so next, we have an item that is discussed, the ABM Energy Savings Performance Agreement, and including any amendments, the scope of work. And this is also listed in an executive session. So we will ask our legal questions there, and then come back and take any action as necessary with regards to any amendments, to any scope of work. Is there anything that
Judge, is there something?
Before you need to Yeah, go ahead.
On that one?
You'd like to bring up at this time?
Are we expecting a legal advice on, on that one? Or for the legal questions?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I have
You have legal, okay, that's
I do.
Just making sure.
I do.
Okay.
And so I guess we'll move to discuss and consider a personal services contract with legislative consultants, Bedlanga, Romo, and Shipton, including any renewal and/or amendments. And this was one that got left over from the other day. They did present in court their update. And we do have a contract ready to, to execute with them. And, and so I wanted to offer that, that seemed to be the will of the court to think about the interim in a different way. And so my proposal is, for the consistency in the fact the next session starts September 20, that we execute a personal services contract with Bedlanga, Romo, and Shipton until the end of the year, December 30. And then we could reevaluate at that time. And that in addition, that we, well, that's step one. And that's one of the things that I would like to, to visit with you all about here today, is we try to execute this contract in advance of this legislative session beginning. And I'm certain there'll be another one after that. Is in order to get us to where we want to go and provide some consistency and some clarity. I mean, right now, this week, they're involved in multiple actions with the county in order to help us establish much-needed funding, restoration of grants, attempting to work a situation with the general land office for Bob Hopp here and so many others. It seems to me that the best thing to do is to at least get us through the end of the year, and then when the interim begins, we can really rethink what the court's needs are and what the wishes are. But this way, they can keep doing what they've been doing all year long, which is representing us and our interests very well. And, and I'd like to make that motion in order to, I think it would be, see, if it's mid-September, it would be, I guess, September 20 to December 20? Is that 90 days?
It's September 8, actually. Their contract expired
Okay.
On September 8.
But we could start it on the 20th if we wanted to. I'm just throwing it out. I mean, just September 20 to December 20? Or it's December 30, whatever? I mean, you know what, let's just make it to the end of, yeah. What if something cataclysmic happens on?
Yes, this is Tyner.
Hey, Tyner.
Okay.
You're, you're here.
It would go through to the end of the year.
Okay, thank you, Tyner, December 31st. I know it's like God talking.
Yeah, we can adjust the contract like that.
Okay, thank you. And I've got a second for that.
What was the motion?
It was just to have it to the end of the year, and, and then just come back and see what the new year brings with interim charges and whatever the court's
With an amount, or just, you're just, and you're just offering that in concept?
Starting today. Okay. I'm offering that up as a motion. And as far as a, an amount, there is a blank there right now. I know that there was, to me, there's no difference between the work they did yesterday and the work they did today. But I know there had been discussions amongst ourselves here in court as to, is there an opportunity to save dollars? And, you know
I guess I'm just trying to ask, find out what your motion is. Because the concept I might be okay with, I don't, if you're, I don't know what your motion is for dollars.
Okay.
If you're not making that motion for dollars right now, that's perfectly okay.
I could do the first part.
I'm just trying to make sure
Does that help?
Like I said, I'm okay with the concept of something through the end of the year. I just don't know
Right. So what I was going to suggest, I mean, I would, again, philosophically, I believe their work is no different. So in many ways, I feel awkward about saying change the dollar amount. But in other ways, I believe in the spirit of compromise, in order to get us the relief that we need. I need to know that tomorrow morning, after an email that I got from the Senator's office, that I can call him and start working on this, you know, particular, go ahead. Yes.
And a second, just for the dates.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
That's what I was clarifying.
Appreciate that. Okay, so all those in favor of creating the contract between now and December?
The 31st or the 8th?
It's today?
Through the December 31st.
December 31st.
What happened to the 8th?
Well, I think, I'm going to yield to Tyner. Tyner, would I make this motion for today?
That would probably be through.
Seems like we just didn't have a contract.
We had proposed was $4,000, I believe.
It's not what the question is.
From now until the end of the year.
That's not what our motion was.
After that, $3,500
Yeah, I know.
A month. But, I mean, if we want to take it through the end of the year.
Yeah, I think that, I think it's just, it's just from today. Yeah, thanks, Tyner. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Yeah. So the only reason I say that, Court, is because why go backwards? Just, just accept that, you know, today is the day we're here and the day that we would be executing a contract. And so I would take it from today to December 31st.
You have a second?
And I have a second.
Okay, so for discussion, and I need to amend what I said, I don't believe anything goes on much in December. So what I should have said was, I'm okay with, and I apologize, I'm going to clear that up. I should have said, I'm probably okay through November, because I think there will be a couple of special sessions, and I think there's some value. So I don't support going through the end of December, because I think December's a very, very dead month. I just don't, not, I don't, right now, I don't, so.
December 8, that's why I said December 8. To me, it's a good day.
Okay, so I would have to, excuse me, I'd have to amend that motion. Because the truth is, is that I don't think we know what the governor would do at all. And I don't think that, that it's strange to think in this year that they may work past December 8. I just think that we need consistency. And I want you to know that whether it's, we've been talking to agencies on December, on Christmas last year. So it's, you know, I've called the GLO on July 4. I've called the, I mean, I would like to do it through the, and it just makes sense. It, to keep it to the end of the year. That way, you know, if whatever, you may not have a legislative session the last week, but you, I promise you, everybody's working, except for Christmas Day. So, I mean, that's just the way it works in government. We don't have that many days off at the state level, the federal level. Or you have holidays off, major holidays, but everybody's still working in the agencies. If we're waiting on a grant, for instance, or, it just makes more sense, I think, to do December 30. But if you want to do, like, December 15, in the interest of, you know, what day is it today? The 14?
The 14.
I could do to December 15. That would make sense. And that's a split of the concept.
I'm comfortable through the end of November, whatever else everybody wants to do. But again, and we can get down to the numbers. But again, to make sure, this does not have numbers in it. This is just
Right, it's, again, I mean, again, we're
I'm comfortable to the 8, because that was
All right, all right. So I'm going to do December 8. So I'll amend the motion to the 8, from the 8th to the 8th. Sarah, and Commissioner, would you go ahead and he'll second that amended?
With no, with no dollars, just the concept of
Right, that's right. That's right.
Just making sure, because Tyner came on and
I know, but Tyner didn't hear us.
Okay, I get it.
He's not paying attention.
No, I think he just didn't hear us correctly. Okay, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Okay, so now we've got, as they say, step one. And so in order to fulfill a contract, we need to fill in the blank. And so I would like to suggest that, as Tyner said, that in a spirit of cooperation and in compromise, that they are currently making $5,000 a month, but that we would lower it to $4,000 a month. And I do say that in compromise, because again, I find it a little, I don't know. I don't know how to, illogical, something that's illogical is hard for me. And I don't know what's different about today than yesterday or tomorrow. It's all the same work, it's all the same people.
But it's, but it's not, Judge. So let me, let me try to be logical. And I've really spent a lot of time thinking about this. I, I've talked to the lobbyist on this. I've, I asked them for this list that they've sent to the court, and I've looked through a lot of these things. And I think part of this, for me, is there's some of these things. I don't think there's any way, shape, or form, anyone will ever convince me that people work as hard in a session and out of a session. A lot of these things that they sent us are things that, you know, maybe they need work on, maybe we don't. We could, we could spend an hour and a half going through all these things, because I don't agree that everything on here needs them to be worked on. Some of this is proactive stuff, which I think that will come later. But I don't think we are going to be working on our legislative agenda now. We need to work on that in the spring, because things are going to materialize later. So I think there's going to be a time that that work could ramp up. But I don't think a lot of that's going to be done between now and the end of the year with what we've got. So, so I do think logically, there's a very different distinction between, and I was very candid with, you know, they called, I asked them, I had this same conversation with them, and I didn't say anything to them. But I'm not saying now, I haven't said anything publicly. I'm trying to be very transparent about it. And I said it to them yesterday, I just don't believe there's near as much work in a session as there is out of a session. So I do think there's a distinct difference. And I think, but I also said, we shouldn't ask the same amount of time if we're going to ask, if we're going to pay them less. And so I think it would be very important for us, as a commissioners' court, to go through this list and sign off and say, okay, this is what we want you working on. This isn't what we want you working on. Maybe we want you working on all of it. I don't know, because I just got the list, I guess, yesterday, and started looking through it. And, and some of the things, I'm like, well, you know, you know, engaging with TAC and Conference of Urban Counties and other affiliate entities. And I, okay, that's fine, but I'm not sure that's not something that Belinda and Tyner, or whoever takes that spot, should be doing, or we should be doing. So I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to spend two hours on this list. But I want to, at some point, and because we need to make a decision today, and I'm happy to do that dollar-wise. But I also want to be fair to them when I say, I think we only ought to pay this, but let's talk about why, and, and narrow down their scope, or narrow down their time to where the court knows, they know as a court what we want them to really be spending their time on, because that's the only way that's fair to them, so.
Except for that, you know, that, since you know a lot about the legislative process and participated in it, that, that it's what comes up unexpectedly.
But there is.
Is that you, is that, but if you limit somebody's scope, you know, it the purpose of having a legislative consultant to represent your interest is to actually represent your interest, and to always be vigilant about all the subject matters. It's not to, I mean, you can certainly say, please focus on A, B, and C. But this court once before had a situation where you said to a lobbyist, hey, go focus on this one matter. And what happened was the, resulted in, quite frankly, catastrophic loss to this county with regards to some of the legislation that was passed in 2018. And, and that, that happened on, on a court's watch, because they did not have a robust legislative delegation.
There's some, there's some argument on that one, if we're talking about the same thing, and I'm not, I don't think we want
And I think, I think we're on the same page on that one.
That was not just
But what I want, I want to say is, I really do appreciate the time that you've put in it. And I want you to know that not only did I look at that list, but I created my own. I remember providing it to the court a couple of months back. It shows you the length of, it's, it's like anything. You've ever heard of more money, more problems? So we have grown as a community tenfold when, when you think about our problems. And maybe problems is the wrong word, challenges. That happens because you become the number one port. It happens because you, you know, seen a huge development in our coastal infrastructure needs, storms that have taken place in the last four years, grants that have come down to remediate those storms. And all of that COVID-19 money that's come to alleviate COVID-19, I would suggest that we're in a different season that we've never had before. I would suggest that we're in a different season that we've never had before. And so, um, I wanted to make the motion, uh, for $4,000, because it does reflect a huge cut for somebody that's, you know, it, it, it's a huge cut, it's, it's 20%. And so, um, I would ask that we at least consider that, because we know that that's something that, that's amenable to them. It's in the spirit of compromise, we have a very limited timetable, and we can move on, so that they can move on. We've gotta figure out how to get back to fighting the good fight, and helping our community go get these dollars. And every time we have these monster discussions, I feel like we're, we're delaying that. And so, I appreciate so much the, the, the welcome of, what is it, September 8th to December 8th? But, um, I would like to see if we could get a motion for the 4,000, so that we could, we could just get them on their way and start working and bringing in dollars for, for Noises County, and protecting our interests. So I do have a motion and a second, and, um, uh, I don't know that they're on, but, okay. And, uh, if you did have questions for them, we could get, yes.
Total, total 8,000.
12.
12, wait, oh, 12.
12, yeah, it's for each of them. In other words, their, their current contract care is 5,000 a month, per individual, and now it's 4,000.
But, okay.
That's the motion, okay?
Thank you, sorry.
Sure.
Total 24,000.
12,000 each, 24,000.
It's just 4,000 a month for each. Currently, they're making 5,000 a month, okay.
Remember last time, so-
Oh, no, that's a good point.
That's what I'm saying, total 24,000.
Yeah.
For the two months, okay.
Right.
That's right.
Okay.
Okay, and, uh, and then, uh, then we can move on, you know, from there. But, uh, I do have a motion and a second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, alright, um, I'm not certain what, um, what, uh, what charge you would like to put forth for them, but I would say, if we are gonna get a contract, we do have to come up with a, an amount, and, um-
Judge, my, my, my problem with this, and I told them this yesterday, when we started this, we had one lobbyist, and we decided as a court that we needed to make a bigger investment, and we were gonna go to two. And then, we as a court couldn't come up with two, and we decided on three as a compromise. And so, as I said to them yesterday, I say here too, I think we would be fine with having two, but I don't want to eliminate anyone from the team, and that's the problem that I'm having is, I think if we had one or two, the money that, that I wanna put forward is, would be a lot more comfortable than it's going to be, because we have three, and I get it, um, it's not going to be, um, what everybody loves, but I, I'm gonna make a motion that until the end of the year, we pay them $2,500 a month, and then we revisit after that.
Yeah, and, and we already know that that's not acceptable to them, and, you know, they have clients that this compromises their work, right? You can't say, I'll pay half of what, I mean, in the spirit of working for Noises County, I think they were interested in making certain that we could have a haircut, but to have 2,500, um, is not in keeping with their other, you know what I'm saying? I mean, you, you can't say to them, it, it, it damages their ability to go out and, and tell other clients, hey, they get 50% rate, but you don't. And that was their rationale, it makes perfect sense.
And we could, and Judge, there was, I mean, I basically said too, we could just, you know, not do anything-
I just think we're not gonna have a legislative team.
And we could just say, right, we could just say for the end of the year, we're just not gonna worry about it, because I don't think there's that much going on during the special session that's going to include us. Reed Clay is a different contract that we're gonna get to next. Uh, I think he could handle the ARPA money, um, pretty much on his own, so we could certainly go that route for the end of the year, but the court has decided to do something, and so I was just trying to put forth what I could do. I would extreme, I would obviously with that pay, um, also welcome the limitation of their hours, because people do take different rates of pay in the legislature based on the hours requested and, by the client. So if we requested less hours of them, then that would not be, uh, in any, in way, in my opinion, any way, shape or form, a slap to them. If they think it is, I, that's not what I'm meaning to do, and that's, I have to live with it, because that's, because honestly-
I mean, I think we can, you can just make the motion.
Here's the other side, I voted against, so I'm, I'm going against what I voted for when I voted to not have lobby money, right? I got chastised for that from, from, from some, and, and that's okay, I got a lot of support from others on that. But because with the law didn't change, I believe we have to have something, right? So, even though I would-
I've taken a motion.
You mean the anti-lobbying bill? Know that the anti-lobbying bill, we comply with every aspect of the anti-lobbying bill that was proposed on the Senate floor.
But it died, so it's, it's a rule.
I know it died, but it wasn't for anti-lobbing, it was for the fact that it required transparency. I just want you to know, and the public to know, that the elements of the bill, Noises County already complied with. We did not have a problem with what was amended on the floor, because we already do it. And so, that's very important to know. We already complied with the, with the elements that were discussed.
I shouldn't even brought that up, my point was, I was just trying to make the point is, I'm kinda going against myself by even supporting anything, because technically, technically, I shouldn't even be voting for anything if, if I was going to, but I'm trying to be, as you said, some compromise.
I'll just take that motion, I'll take the motion, Gonzalez seconded it, and, um, um-
And that's only because I think we're gonna have two or three sessions. I mean, I'm not even sure I'd be doing this if I didn't think we were gonna have two or three sessions.
Well, and look, a contract, remember, by definition, is what two people create mutuality with, right? They have to accept it. I don't think they're gonna accept it, but, again, you know, um, you, we can make the, you can make the offer. You've made an offer with the motion, Gonzalez has seconded it, I think it's disappointing, uh, but we're gonna need to move forward, so let's do that right now. All those in favor?
One second, that motion does include a reduction of their hours and a reduction of their time spent comparable to the amount of money we're paying them, so that that's clear in my motion, I wanna make sure.
Okay, so let's make that motion as, that, um, there would be a 50% reduction in time and hours, is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so again, we can only offer it, um, I will say that, um, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'm gonna vote no, because of the premises that these are people that were making a certain amount yesterday, and for this reason, I, I cannot vote for this contract, it's, it's not in keeping with valuing, uh, their, their work, but, uh, okay, and so we'll have three to two, so we'll offer that, Commissioners, through our county attorney, the 2,500, and we'll see what happens, uh, and then we'll just have to probably have it brought back, you know, if, if it's not accepted. If it is accepted, then we'll let you know immediately.
So per month?
Per month, per individual.
And I misspoke earlier, it was 36,000, not 24.
Thank you.
So, I wanted-
No worries.
What did you misspoke? I didn't hear-
She was doing a total contract.
Yeah, I was doing two months, and it's three, sorry.
Three months, right, okay, so there it is there, and, um, okay? And then, um, the next one is item number five, and it's a personal service agreement with Reed Clay, and, um-
I'll make a motion, we'll do the same thing with him, we'll do with the other ones.
Okay, a motion and a second, and I know for a fact, um, Reed will not accept that offer, so, um, yeah, I mean, it's the same motion, he's, he wants to offer 2,500. Okay, so all, all those in, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, no?
Nay.
No.
Okay, so that fails, um-
I, I would move for Reed Clay for 3,500 a month for those three months. I think, with the ARPA funding and the things that he does, I think we have to cut, but I think his, um, there's gonna be a lot more time spent by him. And, and again, cutting hours comparable to the, the cut, same thing. That would be my motion.
Okay, um, obviously, I mean, I, I've, the value that, that Reed has brought, um, I, I do want you to know that he, he lowered it to 5,000 when we needed the cut. I know for a fact also this will not work, but, again, I mean, um, I'm happy to, to make that proposal and bring it back, but, I mean, again, you're asking people to, who, you know, if, if, it just, it doesn't work, but-
What, what are the motions?
It's a motion, we need a second.
For 3,500 a month?
For 3,500.
Per month.
Yeah.
For three months.
Otherwise he doesn't get renewed, so.
I know, I mean, no, nobody wants to compromise their values in what they're doing for other clients, you know? I mean, to be honest with you, in the law business, and I know you're a good lawyer, you know, if you solve a problem and you charge a client a certain amount, whether it took you two minutes, two hours, or two years, it's still the same amount, you know, that you've charged them. And I, I really, um, I just don't understand, uh, what we're trying to do here. Maybe what you could do is, would you mind negotiating with them? You can negotiate with Romo, Shipton, Berlanga, and Clay, because I, I wanna pay people what they've been being paid, and what they, you know, Reed's brought so much value to the table, as is the other team, it's, it's just so much.
And I would disagree, I would, I would even make-
Do you like to call him?
For 4,000, no, 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 for 4,000 for Clay, because I think that's, I think he's, right now has a different, because of that ARPA funding, I think that's his strength, so I would, I would amend that motion, because, and nobody's seconded it anyway, so that could still die.
Okay.
I mean, that's up to you.
Alright, well, I'll, I'll second and, um, see what he says. And, uh, and, and would ask, um, for all those in favor-
And this is through the end of the, this is through the November, or December 8th also, because I don't think we did that one to start with. So this would be through the same thing, December 8th.
Alright, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
And again, commensurate with less work.
Yeah.
Aye, sorry, so, again, I want this to be clearly articulated to them, that, okay, we expect less time for less money.
Okay, thank you for that, um, and so, that does, um-
Two, uh, two days and three years.
That's correct. Okay, so we got that one taken care of, and, um, and so we'll move on to human resources, and this is, and Julie is here with us right now, and this is to discuss and consider Commissioners Court Manager job description. And I apologize, but I'm getting an emergency call, so forgive me, I'm gonna step out. And John, will you take over, and Julie, you're gonna need to answer some questions, I'll be right back.
Do you want?
Yep.
Just to start off with, this was a new position, brand new position, created on June 13th of 2019. So it's, it's a fairly new position, and Tyner was the first and only person in this position when it was created. Do y'all have any questions on it?
Yeah, I, let me, if I don't, if you don't mind, Commissioner Protim, Mayor Judge, whatever, yeah, John. So, the reason that I wanted to discuss this was, um, in looking around and seeing what other counties have been doing, and, and not that we have to follow every other county, but, but it was brought to my attention that some of the larger counties have started establishing a county administrator. And the county administrator, and so when, when Tyner unfortunately told us he was gonna leave, it just kinda prompted me, because I, I didn't really wanna go do it now and add another position, and, but then when Tyner said, he's retiring, uh, I called him and, and said, I'm sorry, you're retiring, you sure you wanna do that? And he said, yes, I said, okay, so it kinda got the, the wheels, you know, rolling on that. And so, what, what I, what I would like to kinda talk about doing is, is really revising this whole position to where it is a county administrator, where all the department heads, uh, not, and, and I'm not talking about elected officials, even though they are electeds and considered department heads, the appointed department heads would report to this county administrator to help, um, make the county run, uh, even more efficiently. We're getting, we've had, we've added department heads, we've got more. It's very difficult, in my opinion, for this court to oversee all the department heads efficiently with every other thing that we've got going in this county. And so, I wanted to, to bring forth for the court's consideration, a county administrator that would, and I don't have like a whole job description, I've just got a basic concept, and the concept is that, that the, the department heads would report to the county administrator, uh, and then the, and then the, the court adminis- county administrator would report and be hired by the court. Department heads would continue to be hired by the court, but would report to the county administrator. And that's about as far as I've gotten with the general process that I wanted to talk about with, with the court on this.
And one thing that I kinda put in there, that, that 30% of his job description would be government affairs. I know that Belinda already has government affairs in her job description, but they could rotate, you know, during the, uh, session, you know, and work with maybe two lobbyists instead of four lobbyists, you know? So, uh, we used to before, Tyner was our government affairs, as you remember, uh, when Steve was here. And, you know, he'd spend half of the time in, in Austin, and lobbying was, were the lobbyists when we only had one or two lobbyists, you know? So, and he'd come back and give us a report. Uh, so I don't know, I think that we really need to implement something here that we can utilize more. And as far as meeting with department heads, I, I, I like, I like that idea. He can come, use us a report instead of everybody coming in, he can use a report, a kind of an update of what, what's going on, you know? So, that, those are the things that I kinda look at to try to maybe, um, implement, uh, you know, a different, a little different role, you know, so.
And Judge, I don't, I'm sure, you were out when I-
So sorry.
No, no, and I should've, should've just waited, because I should've waited till you got back. So, what I'd said was, the, the reason I put this on for further discussion is I, I've seen where a lot of the, some other counties are, have shifted to a county administrator role, and with Tyner's departure-
Like a county manager?
Right, and with, right, and with Tyner's departure, it made it sense to have the discussion to do that, where the department heads reported up to the county manager, uh, we still hired the department heads, uh, and we could, you know, and then, and I have, I have a general concept, I don't have it in a, in a job description, but I thought this was the time with Tyner leaving, uh, to have that discussion, because I, I think it would help run the county much more efficiently and effectively if we had someone that could really help do that for us, because we've gotten so big, and we've got so many projects going on.
I, I think it's a great idea, and just, you know, we, we'd actually mentioned it, uh, maybe a year ago, where we talked about a budget office and a county manager, and how it's actually, how other urban counties do it, so. So what were you suggesting is, Julie, uh, create some language and to bring it back to us quickly?
Right, and Commissioner Gonzalez had suggested adding, um, some legislative, potentially a legislative-
Government affairs also, so Jim and Belinda can rotate, go on maybe to doing legislative sessions.
Maybe just have that as a-
Yeah, I think, I think that-
A role.
A court, a court manager is gonna have knowledge of governmental affairs, but you need your governmental affairs officer to be your governmental affairs officer. In other words, you don't, I mean, now you're really saying you're gonna do both, but, just so you know, a court manager would act, and like, for example, Tyner now already goes to some of the meetings, right?
Be more like a lady.
So, I mean, I think that's, I think that's fine.
Right.
You don't wanna water down your governmental, uh, officer, but I think it's normal to have a county manager attend a lot of governmental meetings.
It just has maybe some experience, but, but that, that, the governmental affairs person's gonna report to the county manager anyway, so-
Sure, it, it works out.
Right, but-
I mean, like I said, Tyner, Tyner right now sits for me in so many different meetings, uh, and Belinda does too. I think you said the most important operative sentence, which is, this county has just grown so much into so many different arenas that you've gotta be able to cover, you know, all of it, so, um, if you wanna look at Hidalgo counties, the way they do it, that's a good, that's a good template, Fort Bend.
Yeah, and then the person would just report to the court, we would, just like we do department heads, we'd hire it, the, the department heads would report up to the court administrator, or county manager, whatever we wanna call that person, and, and I just, I just think that is a- Yeah, so that was all I wanted to do today, and if, if that's something that the court feels comfortable with.
Can we vote as a motion to direct Julie to please make that? Let me tell you what I am a little worried about, if it's alright, uh, is that time is not our friend. Uh, we are, you know, I, I came very close yesterday in the middle of the hurricane, well, maybe it wasn't yesterday, it was day before yesterday, and I was gonna say, hey, Tyner, don't you just really wanna stay two more weeks?
Well, that's what I've already asked him for a month, Judge.
Don't you just really, really wanna stay?
Judge, I asked, I asked him for a month, Judge.
I said, I want two, I just want two.
I already did it online, it's a done deal. It's a done deal.
We can undo that deal.
Right.
We can just figure out-
I can't change it.
We can lose it, we can lose it, Tyner.
But, you know, one of the things that I was, I was thinking is, um, it, time is so important. So, I want you to know, I kinda always have a little bit unfair advantage that I know, kind of glimpsing what's happening before the, the agendas come down. I know Maria's gonna need something very quickly, uh, it's, it's really important for a grant. And so she has asked me about a special meeting the first week of October, and I have suggested that, you know, we're gonna work with your calendars. I, I think I, anyway, I just wanna say that if we do this, look, this office cannot, um, you know, everyone can pitch in and help, but you do not wanna have this position open for too long. On the other hand, sound like Tevya, on the other hand, who knows what I meant by that? Nobody?
What, what did you say?
Uh, Tevya, on the other hand, okay, never mind, fiddler on the roof, okay?
Ah, that's terrible.
Tevya, anyway, he always-
I'm asleep doing that part.
Anyway, so the, the bottom line is-
Make a few comments.
Yeah.
I'm gonna take these things out of my ears, because there's a terrible delay. And, um, what I want to say, um, if you would please, um, the job evolved from, um, a lot of nothing. Um, I was in the county attorney's office and worked for Judge Barnes, and, um, he had no staff. Um, in Borchard's term, probably one of the bigger things he did was, um, started the grants office. And we started getting grant money in, which was unprecedented, um, and, you know, you know, Richard was from Robstown, he hired, uh, Elias Vazquez as grants administrator, and, you know, we started to get huge grant money out in that direction. Um, what happened was, just for history purposes, Borchard wanted to know where the money was, and I can tell you this, because the statute of limitations has run out on everything, I think. And, um-
You're being recorded.
Okay, I'm sorry, so, um-
Have you been drinking again, Tyner? What's going on over there, buddy? Don't get emotional on us, come on now.
So Borchard hired, um, the first assistant county auditor, which was Steve Waterman. And, um, that way Borchard could find out where, you, you know, all the accounts and all the money and, you know, everything. And it was, I mean, it was all good intention and everything. Then there was, uh, tobacco money, huge tobacco settlements, and, you know, how that worked out. Um, I was actually in the county attorney's office when we filed suit, um, you, you know, against, uh, Philip Morris and, um, the tobacco companies, um, I was actually on the tail end of when Carlos Valdez filed a suit against the, uh, state of Texas for not moving prisoners, um, and leaving them in our county, county jail. And it evolved into, um, some rules that, uh, told the state that they have to, uh, get their prisoners out quickly. have to get their prisoners out quickly. That evolved into, I should have saved this for September 22nd, I'm sorry. But, it evolved into something where, you know, I started doing resolutions for the, for the court, the judge, and then I became a chief in the county attorney's office. And Borchard hired me in 2000. So, I started doing commissioners' court agendas in 2000. And so, I've done commissioners' court agendas for 21 years. And it's over 10,000-plus agenda items that I've been involved in. And it's been an amazing experience. I won't change anything. Let me tell you this, though. My heart has always been in to protect the court and the interest of the public. And there's not a person on the street that will ever complain to me about not having access to me. So, anyway, I've always been accessible to the public. I hope you'll hire somebody to replace me with those sentiments. It's important to me. I'm always there for the public.
You know, Tyner-
Thank you, Tyner.
Tyner, this is, you know, it's amazing how they say, you know, time flies. When you gave us notice, it seemed like we had time. And now, we seem like we're in a race against time. There, you're not a replaceable person. Your institutional knowledge and understanding of court's history and the legalities of what we're doing because of your background as a lawyer, as well as just your overall general kind and compassionate demeanor, along with understanding when no means no at the same time, has made you just a perfect candidate. I think that the evolution that you talked about continues, and that's what Commissioner Chesney was saying, is that there is an evolution. And I think that you've set the tone for that evolution. And I agree with you, this has to be a thoughtful process, which is what I wanted to say to Julie, is we do need to post as quickly as possible. If we could bring back the final verbiage quickly, it would really be helpful, because we want to post it and allow for adequate time to do a real search of the state of Texas. Because somebody who's involved in county government, or somebody who's a chief of staff, or a legislator, or, you know, there's going to be a perfect person out there. But, Tyner, at least from, from my aspect, we will look for somebody who serves, right? That's your, that's what I think I'm hearing you say, is that look for somebody who has a servant's heart. And we will, we will definitely do that. And it's not your retirement day yet, you've got a lot more work to do in the next two weeks. But, but I love that you set the tone for who we're looking for and what we're looking for, because you are a little bit of a jack-of-all-trades in court administration. And, and so, again, I think that we're echoing that, aren't we, here? That that's what we're looking for? Isn't that right?
And one, Tyner.
No, but isn't that right, what we're looking for, as far as-
That's what we're looking for, some- You know, a city manager type of person?
Right.
Um-
And there's a lot of-
You're a financier.
Yeah.
I mean, all this evolved over time.
Right.
I mean, there was nobody that worked for Judge Barnes.
Right.
His wife delivered memos throughout the courthouse-
Through the phone.
On his behalf.
Right. No, things have, things have really changed. And like I said, and we're growing up. So, I think, Julie, from what I'm hearing, is that we could, you've heard, have you heard enough, and I'm just going to ask commissioners to send to you any verbiage that you want Julie to consider. She'll try to put it together, get it back to us super quick. And then, there is, like I said, we have another court on the 22nd. Maybe on the 22nd, we can approve it, and that same day, get it posted. And then, that way, maybe in three weeks, we can be, you know, interviewing. And again-
I agree, Judge.
Is that, I mean, that's got to be our goal. And then, just so you know, if there's not anybody of the caliber that we need, we're better holding the fort down here, okay, than getting somebody that's not up to speed or snuff here. This is a, this is the most important job. And I'm going to tell you, when I found my interim, we went through a process, a company who specializes in, you know, folks that have high-level, you know, qualifications. I'm going to encourage Julie to send it out, you know, to them and to other people that, other, what is it, organizations and entities. I know she posts, has certain postings, but-
It posts nationally.
Posts nationally.
Government jobs.
Right. You want somebody who knows how to manage 2,000 people, okay?
Well, actually, you want them to manage about 15 department heads who can manage, right?
Well, that's right. I mean, forgive me, but it's always, you know, you're right. The people that we manage, you know.
Are we going to require a law degree for governmental affairs part of it?
I don't think it's, I don't think it's a requirement, but I think you should put JD preferred, MBA preferred, managerial experience preferred. That way, you attract the right people.
But like a master's in public administration?
All of that preferred. That way, it all gets a little count.
MBA, MPA, and JD.
It does say masters or graduate degrees.
Right. So, put MBA, MPA, JD, you know.
Yeah, because with this one, I mean, with this one, I do believe we need to up to, you know, up it, that sounds, that doesn't mean anything against Tyner. I mean, we need to add some things here, because we've got to have someone who's involved, who knows a little bit about planning, knows a little bit about engineering. And that's not an easy position to fill and do. So, I think we do, or some really good comparable work experience, you know, whatever that means in those fields, because-
Right. You just use the words preferred, and then, you know, experience, but I think you want to have somebody that's, you know, and this is the highest paid salary in the county, other than our doctors. And, well, I'm sorry, other than our judges, all right, our district court judges and our county court attorneys. But it's a very high-paid salary.
Yeah. Those are all statutory, too, so-
Right, that's true. I guess that's, the point is, is that it's-
Can you also check base three and two? I think there's a lot of repetitive in base three and two.
I think you got to start over.
You know, it's cut it short.
Yeah, I think you got to start over on this one, right?
Cut it short, but I'm saying-
Well, just, just do your best to, I mean, remember, if it says the same thing, it doesn't hurt you. It's what it doesn't say that could pass, it's the omission, not the duplicatious nature of it. I mean, if it says it in a different way, it's because it could be interpreted, it covers the bases. But get it to us as quickly as you can, having heard some of the comments, and then we'll be back on the 22nd.
And Judge, I think we need to make that in a form of a motion, which-
Go ahead.
I would like to move that we instruct the HR department to create a job description for a court manager slash administrator with the comments made, as far as some of the requirements, and to, and to get that back to us just as soon as we can.
Okay.
In advance, if possible, the 22nd, so we can review it.
Absolutely. And if you get it back to us in advance of the, or even just, really, well, we're going to have to give you comments, right? So, the faster we get it, the faster we can give you comments back-
Right.
So that we know on the 22nd, if we're going to be able to approve the job description.
There's a really good article I'll email it to you, Julie. I was researching, and over the summer, Harris County was going, was going through the process of selecting the court commissioner, court administrator, whatever title they used. And you would think as big as Harris County was, they would already have one, but they actually were just creating it this summer. So, they may have some resources still online that-
Great idea.
That go into that, into that job description, so.
Or we can, we actually have the chief of staff for Judge Hidalgo's office. Maybe, I'll give you his number, and you can just call him and say, hey, you know, how did you, what was that job description like? I mean, obviously, it's different, but the point is that there could be people that were interested.
The only thing with Harris County is it's so big that they have like different layers.
They do.
So, Cameron or Hidalgo, if they do, it would probably be more appropriate for us.
I agree.
Or any other county that's our size. Yeah.
Imson.
Yeah, because I read that article too, and it was, they went into all these different deputy, I mean, they went way deeper than we're going.
Yeah, they have a huge, that's true.
I'm just saying the language, there may be some language you may just take from different-
Anyway, do your best, Julie, but we are in a time crunch, because, again, we can, we can hold court, but we really do need, you know, we really do need somebody, you know, in that position. And I will say, I have the utmost, you know, confidence that court administration with Teresa and Tara and, and also with Belinda will do their best job in the gap. There will be a gap. And if you need, you know, some, some assistance there, I mean, you know, let us know. I mean, we're, we're very aggressive on our, on agendas, and maybe some presentations can wait, or, you know, we'll, we'll work with you. You know, we don't have to, we're going to have 30 days of gap, no matter how we cut it, and we need to be careful that we don't overload court administration. So, that which can wait, let's let it wait, right? That which cannot, bring it forward, and we'll make it work.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
We need to vote.
Thank you. I need to vote, yes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post a sign. Okay, that takes us through, Julie, when you weren't in the room, we took care of number two, just as a matter of situational awareness, please-
They're already being posted.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm sure Jenny appreciates that. At this time, I'm giving notice that commissioners' court may elect to go into executive session anytime, which we do right now. And it's authorized by the Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. To the extent that we need to deliberate, we do so in accordance with Vernon's Texas Code, Sections 551 of 71, 72, 73, 74, 74, 5, 76, 8, 66, 7. We're going to hold executive session to consult with our attorneys relating to real property, gifts, personnel matters, county advisory boards, security devices, economic development negotiations, and other matters that may be discussed in executive session. Upon completion of the executive session, the commissioners' court may be in open session, take such action as appropriate on items discussed in executive session. And so, I'll gavel us out, and the time for the clerk is 4:38 PM. And I'm going to ask those who are not necessarily needed for items A, B, C, D, E, to please clear the courtroom, take our mics down, and I do want you to know that-
Oh, Judge, oh.
Yes. We'll be, you want, what did you say?
I apologize. I can do it after we come back. I forgot, I want to go back to another, one of our former agenda items, I wanted to clarify something, so.
Well, when we get back.
Yeah, I'll do it later.
Okay. And so, we'll come off the record, and then we will be back.
What do you think, Judge?
And Marvin, I'm going to call you in just a second. And by the way, once we-
Clear the courtroom. I know-
Back from executive session, and we do have some matters to take up. Most notably, is there a motion on item B regarding the case Sonia Resendez's next friend versus Nuesis County?
Yes, Judge, you make a motion to settlement with Sonia Resendez for the amount of $30,000.
And also, do you make the motion to ratify the filing of the suit?
Motion to ratify the filing.
Thank you. And I'll second that motion.
And authorize, and authorize the county judge to execute that.
Yes, one more time, yeah.
And authorize the county judge to execute settlement documents.
Thank you. And I'll, I'll second that amended motion. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. And looks like there is also a matter on item D and item E. And I'll make the motion on item E, and that is to authorize the county attorney and the county judge to attend the upcoming Harbor-Del Sol Marina Association meeting, which we believe to be tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM, and to consider, and to authorize them to take any action in the best interest of Nuesis County, as trustee for-
Second.
I'm sorry, the county judge and the-
County attorney.
Okay.
Or her designee. And I've got a motion and a second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay. And then Commissioner Chesney, item D?
Thank you, Judge. I have a motion to allow the county attorney to engage ABM to remove completely the amphitheater from the current contract, and/or to substitute a price comparable energy savings project ancillary to a current project under the ABM contract, further to not incur any more cost on this project until this matter is resolved. And again, I want to stress on this, the energy savings part. I, they, ABM has been kind enough to indicate that they're willing to work with the majority of the court on this, and that they've, they have provided me two potential energy savings retrofit contract, retrofit substitutions, which I think is what this contract should be all about anyway, is energy savings. And therefore, that's the motion that I have on the floor, and I appreciate ABM's willingness to work on this.
Second.
I'll call for a discussion. And is there any discussion? Commissioner Hernandez, do you have any more discussion?
No, I don't, Judge.
Commissioner Modas?
No.
I just had a little more, but I'll wait for you, Judge, if you wanted to-
No, go ahead.
The reason I'm making this motion, just to give further clarity, is I also believe this isn't just about the initial cost of the amphitheater. I don't believe that this is a project that will do anything but potentially lose additional revenues in the fairgrounds. I've talked to people who run amphitheaters. It's a very difficult way to make money. It's a very limited revenue-producing thing, and I think it is just going to potentially put additional drain, financial drain. Not only could we use the money for a want project instead of a need project, not only could we put actual energy savings projects in an energy savings contract, we have so many different needs in this county for buildings. We currently have, I don't believe it's appropriate to spend 2 million, close to 2 million dollars on a project that is a brand-new building that we don't need, that I believe will continue to lose this money. This is not an energy-saving project. This, and everybody's acknowledged that, that it's not an energy savings contract. But, the ones that ABM have provided, which are design-build HVAC equipment retrofit fairgrounds, and design-build HVAC equipment retrofit courthouse jail, those are energy-saving projects. It would continue, if we spent the money, if the court chose on the fairgrounds, it would continue to spend the money in the same area of town or of the county that we're spending it in currently. So, there would be no takeaway from that part of the county. So, everyone understood that they will still be getting the same amount of revenue spent out there. If they decide, if you want to do it on the courthouse jail, that's certainly up to the court, too. But again, I think this should be more centered on energy savings, and more centered on projects that we need desperately to repair, and not create new buildings that are just not a need, they're a want. And I don't think we have, we have the resources right now to be focusing on the wants, when, without a doubt, the needs in this community, in this county are significant. And I think we need to stick with the needs as much as we can, and stay away from the wants. And I think this is a very viable solution to this, to move forward and get a real positive out of this, spend the same amount of money, and do what we need to do on, on places that will actually provide us energy savings, which will then actually provide us the opportunity to have more of an offset to this large amount of money that we're currently paying. So, that's the reason I brought that forth, and I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Commissioner? I feel like you're moving your mic.
Yeah, sure. I do appreciate Commissioner Chesney's, you know, offering to, want to commit that, that dollar amount that would be spent there for this project, to try to remain in that part of the county. I think that keeps him with the spirit of it. I, my, you know, I think it would be a great project. I don't think it's anything big that was once proposed 15 years ago. It's on a very small scale. I think that, you know, based on how it was presented, it'd be very, it would not be costly maintenance-wise, because it's just outdoor. It's going to be basically a concrete pit with some amenities, but it's just going to be kind of a tiered, you know, setup that they would have there in one little corner of the acres and open acres that they have there at the fairgrounds. I definitely appreciate and recognize the importance of not being wasteful, or being as resourceful as we can with funding. We all know, we've all been out there to the fairgrounds on days when it's totally, every inch of that facility, from the questioning center to both ballrooms, and the arenas are all filled up. And then, with our COVID response, the parking lots as well. So, I think that there is opportunity there for, for more, more venue, more opportunities for people to select, if they want an event that's maybe smaller scale than maybe what the arena, or even the ballroom can offer, based on whatever price, you know, scaling that could be set up. So, I would just caution and urge not to jump into abandoning this project. If there is an opportunity to talk to ABM and allow them to speak with, with the county attorney on this, and if there's a way for them to- attorney on this, and if there's a way for them to work something out, then that's great. I worry, because we are already moving forward on this project and have already committed to it, that it may be too far gone. But that's how I feel. If the attorneys and their attorneys say differently, then that's fine. But I would, I think it's such a small-scale item that it's not that big when you talk about the overall venue that was compared to or talked about in public comments earlier. It was 30,000, 20, 30,000-seat arena. This is below 1,000, well below 1,000, maybe around the $500, $500 mark as far as people that could be packed into that venue. So that would be my concern with this. I think that it would be something that'd be well-used, not only from the western or northern west part of the county, but really from people from all over, like we've seen in other venues there. Out in Robstown, the library is one of them, where people from all over the county utilize it, no matter what precinct or part of the area you're from, that people and kids especially go and use it. And we see that a lot happen with the fairgrounds, with the gun show and the country peddler show, and all kinds of different musical acts, and quinceañeras, and weddings, and all different events that are there. So I think that this offers just another opportunity to market and to sell to the community, to come, and it helps economic development. If you look at our partners at the city council, a few years ago, American Bank Center was expanded, and it was expanded because it was just the need. It wasn't expanded. And I didn't remember hearing any argument that there was any, you know, competition or trying to take away or hurting from any private entities. It was to say they need to expand on what they have because of the use. And I think that that's what this is about. It's about the use, and I think that there is enough use to justify it. And as we hopefully get better one day with COVID, we'll then continually see this used on a weekly basis, if not more often. So, you know, I will, you know, listen and wait for the court's will on this, but, you know, I would like to see this, you know, continue. But if ABM is willing to work with us and meet with the county attorney on this, then I'm willing to listen, if you all feel that this is spending too much money. I think we do need to be careful precedent that anything that says that we commit to a project and we then say, no, we got to get out of it. Hey, if the contract allows, then that's fine, but I just think that that sets a bad precedent. So, once again, I do appreciate Commissioner offering to look at if this project does not move forward, and if we can have a cost savings and realize that there, that we would be able to have that money put back into the area to help build up the facilities more. Thank you.
Okay, I'm just going to make a few comments, because I think you said that so well, and I think that sometimes when you just hit the mark, you should just say you hit the mark. And I think you did, Commissioner. I don't see anything wrong with, you know, making certain that the concerns that the court put forward, you know, are brought forth to the company, ABM. What I do see as a real misleading comment is that, you know, that there is not value here, and that somehow that one part of the county doesn't deserve the amenities that would be pro-family, pro-economic development, and pro-county service. I think that we were very thoughtful when we said we needed to put $30 million into energy savings. It wasn't 23, it was 23 plus almost nine. And we made up those nine with our COs. And when we did 30 million, we said most of those dollars, saving except 1.9 million of it, is going to be in stuff, quite frankly, that you can't really see. We know it's really important, because boilers and air handlers and roofs and even paving are all super valuable to an asset, but we're really not going to see that. So, just like the statutes contemplate opportunities, we took the statute up on its offer to allow for some ancillary opportunities. And I support Commissioner Modas, because I know, because I work with the 4-H program out there and love what I see. But I see that there's not enough free open air space for kids. And I'll be honest with you, I was thinking to myself, I wonder why I missed that 2006, 2007 time period when there was that big fight that went on about Heritage Face Center One, Heritage Face Center One. And I said, oh, I remember. That was my year, my honest hibiscus. It was the year that Jackie got diagnosed with cancer. So I wasn't living here. I was living in California that year. But I can tell you that this is not in any way, shape, or form what was concerning back then. It is completely just a different animal altogether. This would cost 1.9 million, which represents to the $1.5 million payment that's due, $145,000. And of that $145,000, on the most conservative opportunities, not saying you'd make $1 revenue, saying you'd never rent it, which is pretty unforeseeable, but even if you never rented it, your branding opportunities, and I spoke with Spectra Management, who is a national leader in venue and entertainment, and they just merged with another national leader of venue and entertainment, and they thought that it would be valuable. And they thought that it, on a most conservative, it would bring in at least $75,000 worth of branding opportunities without $1 of revenue. And because it is a concrete space, open with solar lighting, it has very, very minimal operations. It was very much brought to this court a year and a half ago, in the spirit of family and the spirit of community. And what is a little hurtful is that I have been, because I wanted to be, the county judge that said, from coast to county, I want to see all of us be lifted up. And I have supported wholeheartedly over $25 million in projects just for the coast in the last 24 months. And what's really disheartening is that I can, if I wanted to, could certainly make arguments that some of that may never get paid back, that some of that costs us taxpayers at least $1.5 million a year, just to that $20 million on our COs at our current interest rate. We could make those arguments. But I choose to be a county that unites us instead of constantly divides us. And I think that when you say to our rural community, you are not valued enough to make this type of a commitment in a post-COVID world, which, by the way, there are, again, we were very deliberate on green infrastructure being a part of our focus, that it really sends a really bad message, because it says, despite the fact this court voted 4-0, and despite the fact that it was recommended by our Public Works Department, and despite the fact that it would cost tremendous legal implications, and despite the fact that even to undo a contract and redo an energy savings would also cost us county dollars, we're still willing to do this. I don't, I don't know if there is a way to really overcome what that really means. I believe that we ought to keep our word. And let me just say, when it comes to energy savings, this is the court that didn't even know what it had in capital needs until 2019. So it's kind of a little disingenuous to say that you're going to go out there and replace it with energy savings, with new HVAC. Because let me just say this, the only HVAC that needs to be replaced after the ones that we're just about to do, which is about $200,000 worth of HVAC with Protech, the only ones that are left is the one for Exhibit Hall B. That's because I'm out there literally every week, and I've studied that capital improvement plan, and it's $3.5 million. So it's not 1.9. But I will say to you that you don't get energy savings when you're not replacing. You only get energy savings when you're replacing unit. There's no savings. There's cost added when you put in new HVAC, which I suggest that we need. So don't think that by putting new HVAC at the fairgrounds, you will get an energy savings unit, right? You'll get a modern unit that produces really great energy savings over time. But you're not recouping energy savings because it didn't exist before. So I want you to know that it's really important to find the right energy savings project. And at the fairgrounds, the ones, the projects that we need won't bring in necessarily dollars, except for there's some seals that need to be done around the windows that have been discovered recently, and some potential, yes, some seals, I guess is the best way to describe it. And we could definitely make that, we could definitely make that adjustment, but I think it's a couple of hundred thousand. But the HVACs that you, were identified for you, Commissioner Chesney, those are already in the works with the PO, and those were already done, unfortunately, before this. And the only one that's left is Exhibit Hall B, which is a huge square footage. And so I just want you to know, I'm interested in hearing what they say. I'm interested in finding out what other energy savings are there at the fairgrounds, other than the ones that I've said, Exhibit Hall B. And the small HVACs, like I said, are already, you remember that this court put in 200,000 for future, I'm sorry, for immediate needs in CO 2021? Well, we made a decision to use those 200,000 for small HVAC units. I think one was in the kitchen, Teresa, and I cannot remember where the other one is. I think it's like, I'm not sure where the other one is, but two big units. And then the other one, we had already attended to. There was three units that were out, and we attended to those, we've attended to those. So, again, I concur with Commissioner Modas. I think we should think long and hard about singling out a project when, a year and a half ago, we made a commitment to that project. I ask you to think about what else becomes on the chopping block. As you said, the perfect example are our libraries. Our libraries cost us money. They don't make us money. But they serve a greater good and a greater community. They even serve the coast. Many of our parks cost us money, a lot of money, because they're really expensive to maintain. The Fallen Heroes Memorial and so many other beautiful things about our courthouse cost us money. But they serve a greater good, providing not only green infrastructure, but a place to gather and celebrate and create a real opportunity for community. So I'm disappointed that this came up during budget when it never has been brought up before. It was very open and transparent. Over eight different Commissioner Court meetings in 2019 and 2020 addressed these projects. And now we wish to say, you are the one that we think we need to save dollars for, for $70,000 a year. I promise you, all of our projects that we have advocated for sometimes cost dollars. But the gain that you have in improving your amenities, again, in a post-COVID world, for free, because a lot of the things about open-air amphitheater, while you can rent it for special occasions, could also be available to certain groups for free, if they didn't need concession or, you know, some sort of other arrangements. I have asked Mayor Gomez to place it on his agenda in Robstown on Monday, so that Robstown can also weigh in on this. I've asked our IDC and our ADC to also weigh in on this. I've asked, I'll be asking the mayors of Awudulce, Banquete, Bishop, Petronila, and Driscoll to also weigh in, as they are only in a 10 to 12-mile radius. And finally, I'm going to talk to developers in the community, people that work here in Corpus Christi, like the Brazeltons, who contacted me and said they were interested in home development in the northwest part of our community. And you know why? Because that's what's growing. That's what's growing. And that's the area that we need to tend to. And when we have and see growth, what people value is quality of place. And that's what this was. It was an opportunity to bring quality of place. And instead, it's brought us a quality of divisiveness. And I'd like to see us heal from that by asking the right questions, allowing us to vet it carefully. But it appears that, as they say, we're back to where we were 20 years ago, when we had these kinds of divisive, you know, discussions. I believe that if we've learned anything, it's that there is a gap in the social determinants of life in the rural community. IRT showed us that. There's a gap in the digital divide, and there's also a gap in the amenities. And when you spend 30, almost $25 million in one area, and if I put the RV parks in, it's 30 million in the last three years? 30 million? That seems a very lopsided, lopsided giving to one part of the community, while ignoring another.
So Judge, you're counting the 18 million for the pier that got destroyed and saying we shouldn't have rebuilt that? Because that's what you're including in that 30 million, I'm supposed to.
No, I'm saying that I fought for that investment. That investment is one I'm proud of, and I believe that there should be some equity in our county for the rural community.
If the storm knocks down Borchardt Fairgrounds, I will be there to support whatever we need to do there. But to include something devastated by a hurricane as part of your calculations to show some disparity between the areas and the county, that's divisive, if I've ever heard.
Commissioner, I'm not interested in arguing with, I'm not interested in arguing with you, but you have made it known about 100 times how you feel about the fairgrounds, how you don't want to put $1 in the fairgrounds. This is consistent.
Judge, I just said if it got blown down, I'd support that, too. And I just offered to put this money back in the fairgrounds, so I don't know what you're talking about.
The fairgrounds needed $15 million worth of work, and you abstained. So you had a chance to assist when the roof needed help from Hurricane Harvey, and you abstained.
Because you wouldn't let me divide it up and vote on the projects I wanted to, and some of the ones I did and some of the ones I didn't. That was what I asked for then.
I didn't, it was an agenda item that was one contract.
I was not allowed to vote individually, because I thought those projects then should have been broken up and voted on them by the merits individually.
I hear you.
And I was not allowed to, and therefore I abstained based on the fact that I didn't get a chance to vote for those projects individually. And I still think we should have voted on those individually, and maybe we wouldn't be sitting here today.
I agree with you on that one.
Well?
But let me say something, Judge.
Yes, of course.
You know, but not wanting to have anything in the western part, northern part, you shouldn't, I mean, I don't think that's the correct word for you to use, because some of us do care about the western part, the northern part. And if you go back and just look, there's so many things that we have done, starting with Bishop, the library, we built it, multipurpose center, the park, the Veterans Memorial Park, you know, and also the Veterans Memorial Area in Awudulce, the Memorial Area in Banquete, you know. So it's not that we haven't done anything and we don't care. I mean, sometimes we just don't want to throw the money away either, you know. And I couldn't care what Commissioner Modas, what he's saying about doing things, but you know, how long are you going to go before you continue to lose and lose and lose money? That fairgrounds is losing money every day, just like the American Bank Center. Every day, you lose money. And we have to give them money, you know, we have to, $800,000 a year, you know, and sometimes more, a thousand every day for using it, when it's our buildings. And, you know, the, I don't know where you get the idea that the theater's going to bring that kind of money in and maybe it's going to be used, maybe. But, you know, we got the ballpark and it's sitting there. Who's doing anything with the ballpark? I mean, if you really cared, we'd be taking care of the ballpark, you know, and because that ballpark is usable for many things, and nobody's doing nothing with the ballpark, you know, it's just sitting there. Yeah, we're going to let it go down. Yeah, we're going to let it go down, and then we're going to worry about it, you know. But, you know, the only time you've seen the people there at the, and you look at the, Jason gave you those statements every time, and every event's got red, 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 you know. So when, when do they, they lose money all the time. I don't care what event they have, it seems like they're losing money all the time.
Well, that's because the roof leaked water when people had it.
Let me finish.
It's hard to rent it when it's leaking.
Please, okay?
Sure.
Okay. And I understand the roof, yeah. You need a roof. And then, thank God they put a roof, you know. And but, but it's not just the roof. I mean, it's not the roof that doesn't make us money. It's for some other reasons, whatever, is not making money. And I don't know what it is. You know, the organization that has the fairgrounds, what do you call it?
We call that Spectra.
Spectra, yeah, thank you. I couldn't think about it. I've got a senior moment, I guess. Because Spectra, and they want a theater when they can't bring money in the Coliseum, they want to bring money outside. I mean, how can I trust Spectra to say that we're going to use that to bring money, to bring all this kind of revenues, when they can't even do it there at the fairgrounds? You know, the only time I've seen that fairgrounds full is when we had the IRT. That's the only time I've seen that fairgrounds full, and that, and that. That's the only time I've seen that fairgrounds full, and that and that event was for everybody in the western part, northern part.
Right.
And all those other counties that were surrounding surrounding us, e- everybody benefit from it.
Yeah.
They all benefit from it.
Do you remember?
They all benefit from it, Judge, because there was, it was, that was the purpose of it.
Mm-hmm.
You know? And so, you know, the drive-throughs, you know, you all did a good job with the drive-throughs, and you did this, and, you know, people came from all over, okay, and they they, but other than that, if you see on the, on the, on the, on the ledgers that we get, I'm just going to go back to what I see when Jason sends us the ledgers, it it lose, and you lose, and you lose. I mean, the, I don't know, how can we lose that much money all the time? And when we're giving them money to help them hopefully get out of the red and it doesn't doesn't work out? So, you know, as far as, and 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 the thing for me here, and you know this because I've told you many times, is the contract, and I don't have a problem with ABM finishing what they started, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. I just, when I, when I saw the contract and says, energy performance, savings, and we're not saving, and those parking lots are not energy savings, how how are we going to save money with their parking lots? How are we going to save money with outside or theater that we're going to be able to pay back? We're not.
Because there's different categories.
I don't see it there, that that it's going to bring us, you do a parking lot and it's going to bring you revenue. How are you going to bring revenue if you still have, you still have a parking lot anyway?
Right.
A parking lot, it's a parking lot, you know, it's upgraded, it's upgraded. But, you know, and and maybe we should have done section by section, item by item, so we can know what what we have with it with every item. But I'm just saying that for
And just so you know, we did.
For you to indicate that we don't care.
No, I didn't say that.
Well, you almost said it.
No, I did not say that.
We don't care about the western side, northern side.
No, I said.
Because we don't want to spend no money on that area, but how much money? We spend a lot of money in that area.
Yeah.
And I'm going to continue to spend the money that I can and that I have.
Listen, I I appreciate your perspective. I appreciate your perspective.
Well, let me finish, let me finish. To upgrade that, those areas, because my heart, my concern is there, regardless of how you feel about it, you know, my my perception is doing for that communities out there, doing for those colonias, be bringing things out there that's going to help them.
Right.
Instead of instead of having to bring everybody's in.
Right.
So I'm just, I mean, I'm just, I I I just get upset too when you try to push me in a category that is not right.
No, I said this particular project. We're not talking about the other ones. We've already had the discussion of giving to some of the things that you have made the forefront, like the million dollars in aggregate that we appropriated for IRT. We can talk about line items, but the problem is there's a double standard going on, and my concern is, is that I don't believe that the contracts will allow, okay, for an easy untwining, and that's what the court is asking Jenny to go and discover.
That's one concern, it's got to be energy savings.
No, but 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 just so you know, stack, that's, you had a chance a year ago, and either you regret it, you blew it, you were asleep, you didn't pay attention, because it was line item, and I personally think that you formed
Maybe it wasn't told right to me either, you know?
A different opinion. No, you were, you were told, there was so much evidence, it's overwhelming. No, you just don't, I think it was a senior moment is the way you described it. But the bottom line is, is that
You want to go, you want to say it again?
No, I'm saying to you.
I don't mind being old like you are, I don't mind saying being old. You are too, you almost say that I am.
Oh, my God.
Oh, my God.
Uh, I have no problem, um, telling, telling, that's not a, that's not a problem. Right, the problem is that you need to make certain that you understand that you voted for this, you had an opportunity to vet it, and what we're saying is, is that
I admit a mistake, I don't know. Maybe it was a mistake, Judge, I don't mind saying that.
It's fine, it's fine, but it's a mistake that's now contract.
Some people do have a problem admitting it.
No, the problem is that there's contractual obligations. We're going to allow Jenny, uh, there's a motion to allow Jenny to go check on those contractual obligations, and then she'll bring it back. But but I I, you get to feel how you feel, you say you've done great for the communities, great for the for the people. This would have been the opportunity, uh, to live up to your word when you op- when you when you voted for it.
So you say I haven't lived up to my word, huh?
Not with this contract, no, sir, you haven't.
Because the contract is not a good contract for me now that I see it.
Well, you, you unfortunately, then we'll have to figure out.
People have changed this contract, and I don't agree with that.
Well, that's, you're going to get a chance, and it takes two partners. You don't get to unilaterally change a contract. It has to have a willing partner on the other side, and all I'm trying to tell you is that that's
I would like to, I would like to make a motion, I would like to, anything that's not energy savings, take it out.
Okay, well, it's not, you don't, it's, you don't, you can direct the county attorney, as she's already said, to go and discuss that. But just so you know, it's important, because I feel like there's like a lapse of understanding, that it's not unilateral. Just because you say it doesn't make it so.
I understand.
All right? So you understand, she gets to go over and talk to ABM and, um, and and see what it is that they want, uh, to do legally, because there's a legal obligation, and that's what I'm trying to explain. And in the meantime, I'm trying to also give you a social explanation of why it is important to have equity. Equity is not equal. Equity means opportunity. And some of us believe in that and used to believe in it, and others do not.
And Judge, that's the problem. Your argument on equity always
No, it's my perspective, I've listened to you, sir.
But I don't, but I don't accuse you of things like
Nobody's accusing anything.
You did too, you and your statements.
You can only make yourself feel that way.
You and your statements, no, you do it very well. You and your statements always make it seem as though we are the bad guys because we don't agree with your project. You accuse us of not supporting things in that side of the project. Judge, Commissioner Gonzalez has done more work in that precinct than you will ever do in your lifetime. All those projects that he just talked about, while I was on the court, I supported. Every project John Maris has brought, I have supported. This is the only one. Everything that Commissioner Hernandez and Commissioner Vaughn before and Commissioner Pusly brought to the, from that part of the county, I have supported. But you continually use your equity argument to take shots at people. I still haven't taken a shot at you, other than to say, I think Commissioner Gonzalez will do more than any of us will do in that precinct in his, in in our lifetimes. But you take shots because you don't like where the argument is going. You make us defend ourselves, unlike what I do. I simply stated my factual reasons for why. I didn't say one thing, I didn't accuse you of anything, I didn't imply anything about you, but you elongate these arguments and this divisiveness that you create by accusing us because we don't support one project.
Oh.
We, you accuse us and imply because we don't, uh, uh, support a want amphitheater that's never going to make money and not do anything but cost this county, that we are horrible people and we don't support things.
I didn't say anything.
That's not an equity argument, that is a personal attack. Let me finish. That is a personal attack on people that are sitting up here trying to do their best that they can and are not making the same accusations to you, and you are causing this divisiveness, Judge.
No.
You are making it hard to work with people because you constantly, go back and review the tape, you constantly attack us if we don't agree with you on projects. That is my perspective. It may not be correct, but it's mine and it's
That's fine, you, you're all, you're allowed, the problem is, is that you want to, you want to articulate how you feel, but you're not ready to listen to anybody else.
Oh, of course.
I have an opportunity to to share a perspective. I've let you very calmly and very nicely appreciate your perspective. Commissioner Gonzalez as well, Commissioner Modas had a perspective. There is nothing wrong with that. Um, but but you have to learn how to respect other people's opinions too.
As do you, Judge.
So I did, I let you speak, and now you're saying that my, my words don't, aren't as valued as others.
Your words are accusatory and divisive.
That's how you feel.
That's right, and where ours are factual, and here's why we do and don't support. That's the difference is
So a lot of
The divisive tenure that you put in here makes it difficult to do anything but
No, I, I think I said I wanted us to be united, coast and country.
But but want and actions are different things.
No, I I I feel
This is a want project and not a need project.
Hey, Commissioner, we're here to do the court's business.
Yes, ma'am.
I've respected your opportunity to to come up with a, a way to, um, renegotiate a contract four months from completion. We are going to have that opportunity, and you continue to somehow, again, uh, only think that your side of the aisle gets to have a say-so here. I'm going to have an opportunity to call the vote, which I will now, and you will have your say-so.
I appreciate that, thank you.
All right, then let's, let's move forward.
Sounds good.
Um, all those in favor of the motion made by Commissioner Chesney and seconded by Gonzalez regarding the, uh, uh, directive to County Attorney Dorsey to go meet with ABM to see which energy savings projects could be substituted for the amphitheater in our, uh, uh, agreement with ABM, uh, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, um. You know, I'm, I'm, you know. You know, John, I I truly support, uh, you, your precinct. I don't think there's anything wrong with Jenny going and speaking to them, but I want you to know that I I make this vote only because I think that, um, you know, it's, um, it's, it's just fundamentally wrong to to go back on your words. I vote no.
Is it no? I've got two, sorry.
Okay. Um, all right, so Jenny, please, please do what you can to reach out to them and, um, and keep the court advised through the matter, the ways you always do. All right. And so, um,
Judge, I had one to go back to, please.
Yes, you did. You had item number A1, you said to A1, you wanted to make a clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
What is the clarification?
When, when we were discussing, um, and the motion, I believe, was was strictly for, uh, those involved in the, um, collective bargaining, that would leave out the sheriff and the elected constables who are also on the front line, and I would like to go back and clarify that they be considered in this, uh, uh, amount that we're giving for the, um, collective bargaining folks.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? All right, done. And, um, also, uh, we've got one adjournment in memory by you, Commissioner Chesney.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, wait, excuse me.
Sorry.
I'm so sorry. Connie?
We still have someone who had their hand raised? I don't know if that's allowed.
She, it's the
Did you, you action?
It's the lady from the Marina judge.
Yes, hi.
Hi, did you have a question?
Wait, yes, I, um, this is my first city, uh, council meeting. Anyway, I noticed others were able to ask some questions when they were, when you were processing things. You came back from a meeting that we waited through most of the day and just simply said, item E, we've ruled. Could you elaborate on that for us? Because we have three members here that you just simply said, we authorize.
Right, so, so let me, let me explain, and then I'm going to have our county attorney reach out to you so that she can visit with you, but we noticed an a- an agenda item for executive session because it
Yes, ma'am.
It fits within the the Open Meetings Act sections that deal with economic development and, um, and deliberations, and so we noticed it as basically authorizing two things, which we put on the record. One is that we will attend the meeting on behalf of Nueces County, and who will attend the meeting, and that they're authorized to act in the best interest of Nueces County. That's all that was noticed, which means that's all that we can really discuss and talk about. Um, and but I'm going to have, uh, the county attorney visit with you, and we'll obviously be present tomorrow as well, um, for the meeting that she has alerted us to.
Okay, my last question, thank you for your answer. My last question would be, is the city-county planning on utilizing any voting rights they may or may not have at the annual meeting tomorrow?
I think that we, uh, placed it on the record, so I feel, Jenny, that I can respond affirmatively, that we did, um, intend to be there as an, as a voting member because we have a, we have a fiduciary duty as trustee legally, and so we were, we will be there tomorrow in that capacity.
As a voting capacity. Okay, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
No, thank you for your patience there.
Uh, yeah, it it's been an all-day affair, and I must say thank you to you all, because I couldn't imagine doing this on a regular basis, what you all are going through. So your efforts are greatly appreciated, thank you.
Well, thank you, and I'm sorry, on, sometimes online, I don't notice the hand. Connie just told me that you had a hand up, and I apologize that we did not notice that coming out of executive session. Thank you.
That's okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to
I'm going to get off now.
Yes, ma'am.
Judge, you, are you taking action on 3B? They did B.
We did. Wait, wait, 3B, let me go backwards.
3B, which one?
3B, we did take action on that one. That was the execute, the Sonia Resendiz's next friend, JG, a minor. That was the execution.
The A, I'm sorry.
A, it's just to discuss the status, it wasn't any action at all. B was the ratification of the, of the, um,
Long day.
Of the authorization of the county judge to set, to do that.
Got it.
Okay. Um.
The item on the regular agenda for, for A3 was resolved with the executive session item for ABM, because it's a regular agenda item as well.
Yeah, that's just the motion I made.
It was a motion that Commissioner Chesney made.
Okay.
Right.
For the bottom.
And 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 for the record, um, uh, I'll just forget it. I'm not going to go back on the amendment, but when it says discuss any amendment, there is no amendment right now, right? It's just the idea of an amendment. There is no legal amendment, there's no backup documentation that showcases an amendment, there's nothing in writing, it's just, it's just a directive. And that does help us a little bit on item number two. All righty, so now I'm going to move to adjournments in memory, and can't believe how the hour has gotten by, but that's what happens, we started at 2:00, so.
Am I, is my judge?
It's a year up.
Okay, thank you. Um, for the court, a condolence that's offered to William James Bill Ferguson. Uh, Bill was a realtor here in Corpus Christi, he was a devoted family man, loyal friend, respected colleague, who went to his heavenly home on July 31st, 2021. At 73 years of age, he will be remembered for his booming voice, kind heart, dedication to family and friends, and love of God. He, Bill's athletic talents were amazing, excuse me, he lettered in baseball and football at WBRA High School, where he was inducted into the Athletic Hall of Fame, and is remembered by his coach for his accession, exceptional leadership and tenacity. He continued his education and athletic career at, at the great university, Texas Christian University, TCU, where he played football and baseball, won the Fightingest Frog Award, and earned his place in the TCU Hall of Fame. He led the team in home runs in '69 and was All-American Southwest Conference in '68 and '69. He was drafted by several major league teams, including the Brewers, Orioles, Yankees, and finally signed with the Cincinnati Reds.